This meeting of the Santa Barbara School Board of Education for Tuesday, September 29th, 2009. We are going to go ahead and open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translation available.
We have Vivian Rodriguez with us tonight.
Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have headsets available for the hearing impaired. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, I am pleased to make an introduction. Through our work on gangs, we forged a relationship with Father Gregory Boyle's Homeboy Industries. And Gina Carvalho, Director of Communications for the Glendon Association, is here to share information on an upcoming forum on suicide and violence, which includes representatives from Homeboy Industries on the forum panels. Gina, could you come up to the podium, please? And Dave, could you just check to see that that's on? There you go. Welcome, Gina.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you Superintendent Sarves and Kate Parker for inviting me and all members of the board for having me here to speak with you today. I'd like to, first of all, invite you and tell you about the 15th Annual Violence and Suicide Prevention Forum that the Glendon Association is going to be holding. This year, we'll be holding it at the Marjorie Luke Theater. And we're very privileged to have a lineup of speakers that will be offering a great deal to our community. As Superintendent Sarves mentioned, we have Father Greg Boyle. By the way, I went down and filmed him. I spent the day with him, and I have him on film also. But two of his lead homeboys, as they're called, will be speaking to the community about their work, their experiences, how they got into gangs, out of gangs, and currently what they're doing with Homeboy Industries. We also have Akila Shorals coming from Los Angeles, who forged the first treaty, the treaty between the Bloods and the Crips. And Akila has been doing peace treaty work throughout the United States, Canada, and the world, having worked also with Desmond Tutu, looking at ways that communities can address issues of violence on every level. And Akila will also tell the story of losing his only son to gang violence. His son was not a gang member, but was shot in a drive-by shooting. And Akila, it deepened his work and understanding of what family members also go through. For suicide, we have the actress Mariette Hartley, who is a suicide survivor. Her father shot himself, and she was silent for 30 years. And it basically devastated her life until she came forward and started speaking about it. And now she's the spokesperson for the National, the Association for Suicide Prevention. And we also have, from our community, local spokespersons on suicide and violence, individuals who have been impacted and transformed their lives and are now helping others. The goal of the event is to bring hope. These are difficult subjects, and they're ones that we want the community to know about. But there's hope. There are people who have been impacted and have gone on to create very meaningful lives, and also are now giving back. This is the message we want to give to young people and to all community members. There is no fee for this. This is a public service at the Glendon Association. Our mission is to help prevent suicide and violence and disturb family relationships. There is a resource fair and refreshments, so the community hopefully will feel nourished as well. And an extensive resource fair. We've invited every social service agency that's involved with mental health, suicide, or violence to be represented there. It is in Spanish. We have headsets and Spanish translation. And I brought up a poster. I know this is going to be televised, but that's basically the posters people have probably been seeing around. We've had great support from the school district. We've now contacted elementary schools, secondary and junior high schools. And these are our speakers. We have Mariette Hartley, Akila, Homeboy. And we really invite everyone to come and participate and help us spread the word, to have these extraordinary people give their time to us. I feel really privileged and honored. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Gina, do you want to repeat the date and time?
Yes. It's going to be on Thursday, October the 8th. The doors open at 6:30. The event starts at 7:00. And there will be a question and answer period, so that these people can be asked questions. So again, it's Thursday, October the 8th, Marjorie Luke Theater, 6:30, program at 7:00.
Thank you. And it's nice to meet you kind of in person after some back-and-forth emails. The work that Glendon Association does is incredibly powerful. And I know that these presentations make a life or death difference. I'm really looking forward to going, and I hope that it's, I'm sure it will be very well attended. I know that it always is. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Herron.
I did attend last year, the 14th annual. And I have to say, it was extremely emotional. Hope was the word of the day. I walked out feeling very, very good, although it was not a very, very good topic. But it's something that's very, very, very necessary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Well, yesterday, we had Special Education Executive Director Tom Guajardo and Interim Administrator Dr. Carol Miller conducting a stakeholders' meeting. It included a number of people who are close to special education in many ways. Thank you, board members, Bob Noel and Susan Deacon, for attending as members of that committee work and participating in the process of reviewing, consolidating, prioritizing FITMAC recommendations. And thank you, Ed Herron, for attending as an observer. On September 18th, just this past Saturday, I went over to Santa Barbara Junior High, and we had 120 teachers, instructional assistants, and tutors who were participating in staff development trainings in various areas on Read 180, CPM Math, at the Avid Program, Jonathan LaMester training on critical reading and critical writing. Follow-up trainings for each of these areas will take place later this month, October 10th, and then again in November, on November 14. Now that we have been able to release categorical funds, we're starting our administrative review of our single plans for student achievement. And those plans will be coming to the board a month from now for your review, questions, and approval. And we're planning, if you'd like to talk about any change in the process from last year, we can do that when we come to future board agenda items. I have been attending recent meetings of the City Ordinance Committee regarding the placement of marijuana dispensaries in our community, particularly near our schools. They come in various categories, some that are existing, non-compliant, non-compliance, some that are existing illegally, some that are unknown, some that are approved but not operational, some that are pending. And when you look at the list of the 14 dispensaries, three are within just two blocks of one of our junior high schools, two are within two blocks of the El Puente Program, which is a program that the county operates for students who have been expelled from our schools, a number of them for drug-related offenses. And we're hoping that the City Ordinance Committee and then the City Council will enact new rules to regulate these organizations and keep them further away from our kids or from the paths of travel to and from school. Thank you, board, for passing the recommendations. We forwarded that to the City Council a number of weeks ago, and we've restated what those recommendations are at, well, we restated those at the last meeting of the Ordinance Committee. Our secondary schools are revving up for upcoming events. And, board, you have your first of many flyers listing those events here on the dais public. We have these on the side table as well. And you can certainly see them on our district website. The following events and performances will happen in October and November. San Marcos High will hold a vocal concert on October 13. Santa Barbara Junior High's Fuse Night School is October 28. Fuse Science Night, excuse me, is October 28. Galita Valley Junior High presents Boo, a series of three spooky plays, on October 30. How appropriate. And coming in November, Santa Barbara High School presents Pinocchio. Santa Barbara Junior High presents Stephanie Hero. San Marcos High School presents Dracula. And these events and others will be on our district website. And our district website is shown on the board. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Noel.
Question. Would it be possible, Dr. Sarves, to have some consideration given to a more user-friendly, and a shorter, and a less tabular special plan for students?
Single plan?
Single plan?
Single plan.
We can talk about that at the end of the meeting.
I'm going to ask you a question, but I put it as a question.
Right. Well, we can talk about that for upcoming agenda items, because it's an upcoming agenda item as we get to the end of this meeting.
And I think you'll be pleased with my answer.
Okay. Mr. Herron.
May I have a question on the agenda?
Yes.
I noticed at the very end, F4 is time permitting update on status to special education. I would like to offer that we cut the F1 and F2 by 10 minutes each to make the 4,000 series, 9,000 series, 50 minutes instead of 60, and give 20 minutes, if necessary, to the special education. That would be approximately 9:50. So take away the time permitting.
Just to make sure that that happens. If there's no objection, we'll do that unanimously.
I think it would be timely, given the meeting last night.
Mrs. Cordero, that's okay?
I have no objections to that, but I do want to remind us, then, that we should try to adhere to our timelines on all of the items, so that we're not getting to that point, you know, at 11 o'clock at night.
Right. Okay. Well, by unanimous consent, then we will make sure that F1 and F2 are cut down, so that we have up to 20 minutes of time for the update on special education. And I will bang my gavel if we are running over on the other items. Okay. With that, we will move on to item C2, which is the announcement of closed session action. We do have one item to report out. That's on item B3, public employee appointment. It was moved by Deacon and seconded by Cordero to approve the appointment of Dr. Carrie Mills as a director of special education, and that passed 5-0. C3, public comments. Mr. Herron, do we have any?
Tara Pfaff and Selena Rockwell.
Hello, Superintendent Sarves and the members of the board. My name is Selena Rockwell, and I'm the coordinator for the Youth Service Specialist Program, part of CADA and the Fighting Back Coalition. And I'm here tonight with Tara Pfaff, who is one of our Reconnecting Youth teachers. Reconnecting Youth is a curriculum that's taught in the junior high and high schools and has been over the last eight years. And I want to thank you for our partnership with the school district, the Youth Service Specialist Program. I think it's been in partnership for about 17 years now. And Tara would like to say a little bit about her experiences in teaching Reconnecting Youth this semester. The goals of Reconnecting Youth, Reconnecting Youth is a research-based curriculum proven to help students improve their academic achievement, their mood management, and their drug use control. So Tara's going to share a little bit about her experiences with that curriculum. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tara Pfaff, and I just wanted to speak to you all tonight a little bit. I was actually a counselor at San Marcos High School for the last couple of years, and unfortunately lost my position due to budget cuts, but couldn't quite leave campus. I really loved working at San Marcos, loved working for the district. And there was an opportunity to teach the Reconnecting Youth class, and so I jumped at the opportunity. And it's been a really wonderful experience to be able to stay on campus and also manage my own classroom. It's a little different than counseling. But I just wanted to speak to how amazing this curriculum is. I knew about the curriculum, had some experience with it, and worked really well with the YSS that was there last year and the year before. But, you know, doing the position is a little different, and it's just been amazing to see how the students are, how powerful this program is. They are, I'm watching students, you know, connect on different levels, and they're creating goals and having self-awareness and learning skills that they didn't have. And I'm just amazed at how powerful this program is. And I think it really supports what the councils are doing. And now being on the other end of it, I see how it just fits really well and helps, it supports teachers, it supports counselors, it supports the school. It really helps with the achievement gap. And it's just been amazing to be able to see what a vital part of the school climate it is. And so I just wanted to speak to you all, being on the other end of it, and to let you know that this is a great program, and especially knowing how overwhelmed the councils are now, because there's less of them. It's just a really great way to stay connected with those kids and have one more resource there. One example I have of a student who, I was getting calls from the attendance office, and she's like, has so-and-so been there yesterday? Was he there? And I'm thinking, well, yeah. And I'm checking my notes, making sure that he was there. And turns out, he wasn't going to any of his other classes except for mine. And so I sat down and talked to him about it. And he, you know, he just said he's been having all these problems and all these different things going on. And when he comes into the class, oh, sorry, when he comes into the classroom, he really, he really just is able to feel like he can work through his problems, and everything's going to be okay, and wants to be there. So, sorry, I didn't like the tone of the thing. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're moving on to the consent agenda, then. Any items to pull? Dr. Noel.
D4 and D5, please.
Actually, I have a public comment as well. Would I still get?
I don't have one.
All right. If you have a public comment, come on up.
Good evening, Superintendent and board members. My name is Andrea Marcus, and I'm an attorney locally here who represents children with special needs and their families. And I came here tonight to give you a little background about one of my cases, which you've been considering in closed session quite a bit lately. This concerns a little girl the same age as my daughter. She's eight. And she first became eligible for special education five years ago. Last December, Holson Beck and Associates, an independent behaviorist organization hired through tri-counties, observed her classroom and determined that the classroom could be reasonably suspected to provide physical and psychological abuse/ exploitation of this little girl, because the aides were so poorly trained, and the little girl's behaviors were addressed in such a rough and untrained manner. This little girl suffers from Down Syndrome and autistic-like behaviors. Needless to say, her mother pulled her from this classroom. She's still at home. I attended an IEP for this little girl last March at this IEP. The principal, the teacher, the school psychologist, everybody at the IEP sat there and said that they were, in fact, providing the little girl a free and appropriate public education, regardless of this mandatory report, incident report that went out to CPS and the other agencies that a mandatory report must go to under the regs. After that IEP, contacted the district's attorneys, and eventually we got some assessment of this little girl. This was the first comprehensive assessment of this child that has ever been done. This girl is barely verbal at that point was. Actually, her verbal skills have gone up greatly since she's been at home. They were actually much better than they were when she was taken from the district, before she started in the district. Basically, she was warehoused in a little classroom at Monroe School, where the people working with her, although maybe really well-intended and kind, had no idea how to deal with autistic-like behaviors, and were, in fact, physically and psychologically potentially abusing them.
30 seconds.
So after getting private assessment at district expense, we attended another IEP. This was last June. At this point, we had some experts who the district has funded on multiple cases of mine. They're well-known and well-respected. At this point, we finally had some good assessment data, which we could use to design an appropriate public education for this little girl, which would include appropriate behavior.
Excuse me. Could we have another 30 seconds?
I wondered if we could allow the speaker to...
I'm almost done. Thank you. I do think this is an important history for you to know about, though, because I do know that you've been considering this case in closed session. And I wish, under better circumstances, I could introduce myself to you, because I know you see my name come across your desk from time to time. Anyway, to make a long story short, we had a good IEP, because we had good assessment data, but still, there was no offer of appropriate support so that this child could safely return to school. We're not asking for private placement. We're not asking for anything expensive. We're asking simply to have qualified people there who could make it a safe environment where she would learn something. So I was forced to file for due process in order to get a response from the district. On the 1st of September, we met in a settlement agreement, a settlement session, a resolution session, excuse me. And we agreed pretty much on the services and pretty much outlined the assessment, excuse me, the agreement that would provide for this child to return to school. On September 17th, I finally sent back our signed copy for signatures from the district. I was notified by the district's attorney that my fees had to be okayed by the board, so they would have to go to the board for your approval. And that wouldn't happen until 9:22. And then after that, excuse me, that was 9:15. And then after that, it came back. My fees were approved. But the terms of the settlement agreement had to go back yet another week. So that was going to be 9:22. Remember, this little girl is still sitting at home with no services, with no education. She's at an age when windows of opportunity are closing quickly for remediation of autistic-like behaviors. And finally, I was told that the agreements for the consultants that we agreed to, that we're going to get her back on her feet so she could return to school, had to be sent to yet another board meeting, yet another week away. So after an agreement, we need three board meetings for each separate part. Well, I was promised that after the 9:22 meeting, I would get the consultant contracts so that they could start working with this child. And we would have a signed agreement, so we knew that she was back on her way back to her classroom. I've received none of that to date. So I was actually going to come to last week's board meeting and ask for your assistance in this matter, but I was reassured and reassured by Dr. Miller that we would have these consultant contracts and a signed agreement. I've still not received any of it, and this little girl is still sitting at home. So I'm asking for your assistance in resolving this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So it was pulling D4 and D5. Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So except for D4 and D5, the consent agenda passes unanimously, and we'll return to that at the end. The action agenda number, first off, is E1, Approval of Memorandum of Understanding with the Dos Pueblos High School Engineering Academy Foundation.
Dave Hatjonck, our Director of Facilities and Operations, will make this presentation. It's been a little while since this group of parents and community members came forward with an offer to help our engineering academy in very significant ways. Fundraising for the matching costs of construction on the Dos Pueblos campus to meet a goal of $6 million complete with the state matching funds, supporting the engineering academy in many other ways that you see in the contract is something that we're very thankful for. Dave will give the presentation, and we do have a representative from the foundation, Lars Bildstrom, who can answer your questions as well.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves. We're excited and pleased to bring this memorandum of understanding for your approval. It's been the work of numerous district staff. Eric Smith, Chris Robertson, myself, Robin Suawaski, and Dr. Sarves have all been involved in providing comments. In addition, Lars is here tonight, Sandy Seal, the president of the foundation, and other members of the foundation, and legal councils for both parties have all been involved. And we're bringing this forward now at this time, because basically, the staff from both sides has agreed on everything except for one issue, and that is the length of the agreement. I touched on that reasoning for the district wanting a three-year agreement in the agenda item. Basically, it was a request of the business division and the personnel office that the agreement be for three years, based on a couple factors, being consistent with other agreements, institutional memory, turnover of staff, things of that nature. And in all due respect and fairness, the foundation is asking for, and has agreed to come down from 10 years to five years. And as I understand, and I won't want to speak for the foundation, but from what I understand, they feel that a lengthier agreement would benefit them for fundraising and recruitment of funds, for matching funds. They're going after a lot of grants in matching funds. So we both thought best to bring it to the board and let five people tell us how long that term should be. Both sides are pretty well, it's pretty simple as to our reasons. And we didn't want to hold up the agreement for not agreeing on something that wasn't the meat and potatoes of the agreement. I do want to caution you that at the end of this construction period, and I believe it will come to pass, I believe the foundation is well on their way to raising funds. And I think, instead of the foundation, it's going to be, is the state ready to have money to give up at the time? We're ready to ask for it, based on the financial conditions and what they're releasing. But I want to let you know that the road at Dos Pueblos is in dire need of repair, and that's not part of this project. And I don't want to repair and put in a new road for a contractor to tear up. So we're going to keep patching that road back there, what's known as Cafeteria Road. And then once this project is completed, I'm going to bring forward a project with deferred maintenance funds. Hopefully, that would be the funding source to repair this road. But I want to say right now that we really can't hold the contractor responsible for a road that's in disrepair, and he makes it a little bit worse disrepair. And I don't want to put in a new road right now and then have it torn up over construction. So I just want to say upfront that when we do this road, I don't want to blame it on the academy's construction. One other point, just real quick. In this agreement, I think it's fairly clear of what everything would be, except if this project ends up costing more than $6 million. There's a couple of things that can happen. The first thing is, we're hopeful for good bids. There's a 5% change order contingency built into this agreement. And our understanding is, is that, you know, if the bids come in too high, we'll have to adjust something and come back to the board with a modified agreement before we ask for contract award. If the bids come in low, that gives us a bigger cushion. But what happens if the project comes in over $6 million? From my standpoint, for the district, I would not allow any change order or anything that would cost the district any money to be approved unless we came ahead of time to the board and stated why we thought the district or the foundation should be responsible for this payment, for the district's side, anyway, to be responsible for the payment, and why I thought it was the district's responsibility rather than the foundation's. Example, we find a gas line that we have to relocate that's in need of repair, and we have to go back a lot further than the boundaries of the construction. Chances are, this gas line would have failed in the near future. So should the foundation really pay for the whole line or just the part that's in? should the Foundation really pay for the whole line or just the part that's for their building? If something came up in the course of construction and the Foundation decided they wanted to do this, and they agreed to pay for it, and that change order went over the $6 million, I use $6 million as the, it's probably $5,99 whatever. But if they agreed to pay for that and there's a funding source, then we'd go ahead and process that change order. So, my intention was that if anything is going to cost the district money, it would come to the board ahead of time for approval, because, basically, other than the Foundation and the matching funds, we don't have a funding source. A few people have read this agreement, and that may not have been, the intent may not have been perfectly clear. So, my only other thing is that after Lars has a chance to talk and give his presentation, if the board is comfortable with the way the agreement is written, that's fine. If the board wants to look around paragraph, I think it's 17 or so, and that's not sufficient for them. You know, you read something and read something, and you talk to people, and something you thought was clear to you, you know, may not have been clear to other people. And I just want the board to feel real comfortable on this, because we think it's a fantastic, exciting project, and we're looking forward to it.
Great. And board members, we're already up to our 10 minutes on this topic. So, questions? We do have a couple of public comments, including from Mr. Bildstrom. So, any questions before we go to public comment? All right, let's go ahead and take, oh, Dr. Noel?
Well, I feel better to see something writing about what you said about change orders. Have you almost ever-
I've yet to see a construction project that did not cost more than planned. And, you know, there's just all kinds of unforeseen things. And this doesn't really, I understand there's a 5% limit, or 5% of the allowance for change orders built into this budget, but there's nothing, it doesn't set any constraints beyond that. And I worry about that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Lars Bildstrom, followed by Lane Wheeler.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Lars Bildstrom. I'm a professor of physics at UC Santa Barbara. I'm here tonight to speak to the action item on the agenda regarding the MOU, which has been so nicely presented by Dave Hettjunk. Our president, Sandy Seal, could not be here this evening. I'm happy to announce why. She's down in Irvine, receiving a $10,000 check from the Allergan Foundation for the sustaining side of operations for the engineering academy. So, best excuse ever not to be here, and so I drew the short stick. So, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Engineering Academy Foundation, and we basically have three strategic objectives on the Foundation's side. The first is to raise the $3 million capital, which I'll speak about. The second is to identify corporate sponsors and sponsors in the community that pay for the operations of the academy. Right now, just so you know, the yearly operations costs of the academy are nearly $100,000. We get roughly half of that from corporate sponsors, and the other half of that from parent donations. That number's going to increase dramatically as we expand, and so we're working very actively in the community to raise awareness and to identify corporate sponsors. Allergan Foundation is a new corporate sponsor for us. Techalode Systems is another new corporate sponsor for us, and we're pretty optimistic that we're going to have many more of those coming in. The third thing we do is basically enable parent involvement to run the academy. We need the parents to get engaged in running the academy and helping in all aspects. We had a parent meeting last Monday night, the 21st. I would say roughly 150 people showed up. Just to remind you, there's 128 kids in the academy, so that's a very good turnout. We had, on our capital campaign side, an anonymous donor offer a $10,000 matching challenge for the capital campaign. At the meeting, Andy and Dolly Granatelli offered another $10,000 challenge, as did Anthony and Sonia Granatelli. So, we have to match $30,000 by October 21st. The Board of Directors of the Foundation's already put forward $16,000 of that to try to get the parents re-engaged this year on the capital campaign. So, our number today is $700,000 of the $3 million, just to give you a sense for that. You've seen a good description, I've got to move, I'm seeing I'm running out of time, already of the MOU. Our desire for the five-year term is because of the level of commitment you're seeing from us. It helps with our donors to understand that the Foundation is engaged. They want to understand what the MOU is. They want to see the MOU. So, it's very important for us to finish this. It's also very helpful to us to know what the duration is. And five years, to us, puts us at the point at which we'll be fully expanded. If the building goes up in 2011, our expectation is by 2014, five years from today, we will be at the full operating capacity, which will be nearly 400 students.
Your time is up, and can you wrap it up real quick?
Sure. The expansion's going to allow for a much broader set of students to attend the academy. Just so you know, we've been working hard to prepare that pipeline at the junior highs. We have a grant that's pending to an East Coast foundation that's going to support tutors for all of the avid classes at the 7th and 8th grade level for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, as well as field trips and materials. So, we're working on the pipeline issue. We realize it's in front of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you very much. Lane Wheeler, President of Santa Barbara Teachers Association, a very exciting proposal in front of you. The introduction to this piece made it sound like it had been vetted by all organizations. SBTA has not been aware of this until I received the packet on Friday. And looking through here, it's a great proposal, except when you come to the operations section. Number 21, 22, 23, all have issues that seem to take the director's position out of the certificated unit and make them an administrator, whether it's implied, implicit, or by reference here. The job description does a very similar thing, in that it describes that while this is not an administrative position, the administration and the director shall be making a variety of administrative decisions. Once again, certificated employees are not allowed to direct other certificated employees. I don't believe SBTA would have an issue with this. If you want to take this out of the certificated realm and put it into an administrative realm with a properly credentialed administrator, that may be one way to address this. But this is the first time we've had a chance to see it. Some of these issues may be very resolvable, but, once again, I do believe that an important organization like SBTA deserves respect and the time to properly address these issues and have a chance to work together with the other organizations to make it an acceptable resolution from the beginning, not from something that needs to be held back and reworked and then brought forward again. I know everyone's anxious to see this project go forward, as we are, but we do need to have some clarification on some of these issues. Like I said, particularly those ones I cited here and the job description. So, I look forward to working with the appropriate groups and with personnel, because I'll be doing the vetting of these particular specifics, I think, and hopefully going to have some positive results. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I had a question regarding the issue of the timeframe, that the district is suggesting three years. The Foundation would like to have five years. And I'm not going to suggest splitting the difference at four. My question was, you know, I know oftentimes, at the city council or whatever, the city council will provide, will give, you know, bonus density or something like that in return for getting something additional from the project. I'm wondering if we would consider lengthening the term of the agreement in return for having very specific and appropriate diversity goals in terms of making the program reflect the demographics of the school, because that is an issue that we have constantly grappled with.
Hmm, that's very interesting.
We have very difficult times achieving it. I'd love, I'd be willing to consider a longer term in order to accomplish something like that.
Any other board questions, comments? Mr. Heron?
One question on the cover letter, fiscal impact. It says, "The district will give construction management," and it says, "The salary funding source is developer fees." Are we getting reimbursed for that, or is the district going to be paying?
This is our existing project manager for the secondary district. Carl Mayrose would do the construction administration for this project. He is currently funded from developer fees, from deferred maintenance, and from bond funds. And that percentage of his administrative contract is constantly adjusted based on the funding source for projects that he's expected to do during that year. He's on board, anyway, and he would have no problem in taking on these extra duties. It's not something that we would be funding extra had this project not taken place. It's something that we would absorb in our administrative overhead. But we wanted to make it clear that while the Foundation is doing a lot, the district is also, we've invested a lot of staff time for people other than Carl Mayrose, and we're also providing the land and the construction administration. But we don't have a funding source for other outside people, like a project inspector or other things that would be necessary for the project. So, I just wanted to make it clear that we would provide construction management with current in-house people, and there's not a dollar amount, because it wouldn't be in addition.
Okay. Have we been reimbursed for the KBZ architects, for what we spent on them?
We will send an invoice for reimbursement as soon as the MOU is approved by both people, the district and the Foundation.
They're not obligated already to pay those fees?
They are obligated to pay those back. But this MOU states that they'll be invoiced monthly. So, we invoice them for all costs to date, and then on a monthly basis going forward.
What was the understanding when we agreed to pay those fees?
We agreed to front the fees while they fundraised.
With no initial payment?
There was no specific timeline in that agreement. And the Foundation has never varied from that commitment in any discussions or any meetings that we've had. They know that that's coming.
Okay. Regarding the time element, I was just thinking, item 16 is a very specific point in time when they're going to hand over a check for $2,345,974. And I was wondering if the agreement could be such that, at that moment in time, the MOU would be extended three years. I just tossed that out as a way to get to the five, but tie it to that event happening.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I have several thoughts, but let me respond right now to Mr. Heron's last suggestion. It's my understanding, and actually my experience, that when you go to donors, you want to show evidence of a lasting commitment on the part of the district if someone's going to give you the money. So, I think they're trying to raise this money in that timeframe, and so to wait to trigger the extended time period would be difficult, because it would not give them that leverage of saying, "We've got five years." My inclination is to support this, although I am interested in Mrs. Cordero's suggestion, primarily because I think that this group has a great track record. I mean, they've shown us that they really have stepped up and are able to sustain the fundraising they've done. I know there's some concerns about continuity. And one of the suggestions you had for the three years was that there is turnover, but I think maybe half of the children have graduated already from the board members, and so I think that's some evidence that these people are in it for the long haul. And fun, I just want to reiterate the notion of it makes it easier for them to fundraise when they have this show of faith on the part of the district. So, that's why I would support the five years. But again, I'm interested in Mrs. Cordero's suggestion.
I also would support five years. I think, regardless of whether you say it's tied to the five years or not, there needs to be a little tweaking of this. And I would say that your suggestion, Mrs. Cordero, would probably only strengthen the position of the Foundation when they went to get two outside funding sources, because it would show that there's a real commitment on everybody's part, that this be a program that is open and actively seeking underrepresented students. So, I think that would be great to talk about adding that in. I'm, one of the concerns that I had was looking at this job description at the end that Mr. Wheeler brought up. I had not seen that before this, and I didn't know, it was a little unclear in the MOU if this job description is brand-new to the MOU, or if it was something that was out there before. And it sounds like that there may be a few wording issues with the job description of the director and the director duties. And then, Dr. Noel, you also brought up the issue of cost overruns of change orders in terms of number 17. So, I'm listing those out. I do not know if it's critical that there be action tonight, or if we can bring our concerns back to your discussions and see if we can do some minor tweaking, and then bring it back to us in October. Is that a-
The 13th, okay? Sure.
If you would like to come on up?
I just wanted to briefly comment on Ms. Cordero's suggestion, just because it's a piece I didn't quite get to. A large part of the expansion of the academy is to address exactly what you've raised. And our work with the junior highs, which is this grant that, you know, I spent last weekend writing, is to go into the avid classrooms in the junior highs. And we know that, you know, that is a population that we feel very strongly we need to get engaged in the academy. There are 300 7th and 8th graders in those, and our intent, if our proposal goes through, is to take engineering academy students presently and alumni and have them be tutors to bring in science and math into those classrooms, as well as provide resources for field trips that are science-oriented, materials that are science-oriented. Because we realize fully the issue you're raising, which is that we need to start preparing that pipeline. We know that the students are there with ambition and drive and potential. If we don't start getting engaged at the 7th and 8th grade, we're not going to have the applicant pool we want to see for the academy. So, that's, just so you know, the active, proactive thing we're doing, far in advance of where we're at. We're not ready right now because of the capacity question, but we realize that that problem's going to be with us. So, I just wanted to let you know, the Foundation is spending energy, time, and resources on that issue quite strongly, and that's work that we've been doing with Peggy Lubachenko, who you all know well, and coordinating that with Elise Simmons here at the district. So, that's the one thing I can sort of amplify a little bit.
Is-
13th?
October 13th is our-
I'm sure we can find, many board members will be here on the 13th.
Okay.
If that's what's-
President, I have a few comments.
Yes, Dr. Noel.
I have several concerns. I share Mrs. Cordero's concern, but I wonder if it would be possible to see a written outreach plan integrated into this agreement with benchmarks and accountability. Because I echo Mrs. Cordero's comments. We talk about this all the time, and the words flow so easily, but we don't really hold ourselves accountable and those who are working with us accountable. And I would love to see something like that. I had a couple of other questions. I can't find, and perhaps I just missed it, how the director is appointed. And I think that's important to be very clear, whether the Foundation is appointing the director, participating in it. It doesn't really say here that that prerogative is exclusively the district's, perhaps with consultation, yes, indeed with consultation. Did I miss that?
No.
Okay. Then there's an issue that I've never fully understood, and I've had a couple talks with Mr. Smith about. When the Foundation raises money, it raises it in the name of the school. The Foundation gets the money, or does the school get the money? How does the money get from the Foundation to the school and the academy? I never see the flow of funds from the VADA or MAD foundations on our list of gifts to the district. Is that money being spent directly at the site level without it going through the path that would be normal for gifts? And partly, I'm just confused. I could be easily corrected on this, but I think this should be clear, how this works. And I see here, like, going out requests for government funds, well, of course, it depends on the program, but, I mean, many of those government funds are, only the school district is eligible for them. And the foundation would be the grant writer, it'd be marvelous and everything. But I think it ought to be clear as to who, how that money arrives, how that money, how we're accountable for the money, and how the money is ultimately dispersed.
All right, Mrs. Swasky, is there something you wanted to chime in on?
I was just going to note that on the attachment A, the job description of the director, it clearly says here that it's not an administrative position. It's a point four FTE-certificated teaching assignment. And this person works with the principal. The principal would evaluate this person just as any other teaching staff member that they oversaw or supervised.
So the principal will, will appoint the director?
No, they, that part, I'm not sure how the, how the person is appointed. But there was a question about whether this person was acting as an administrator. No, they're not. And they would be supervised by the principal. But as far as how that appointment goes, I don't, unless I've missed it, I don't see exactly how that, that is done.
I, a footnote, please, Madam President. Operational costs, to me, it's difficult to make commitments on a fundraising basis to run an operation because the operation requires stability in funding, and fundraising is almost by definition a variable. And, and I worry that, that a program might get going, and, you know, things are looking great the first few years. But it's, at some point, maybe run into difficulty getting those funds for operational purposes. And yet you've got commitments to staff, commitments to students. And I could see this coming back to the board, saying, "Say we're short this year. Could you, could you carry us through, give us some cash flow for operations?" I think we should be, have our eyes open about that as we go into this and have that, have some discussion and clarification of that.
Thank you. All right. No. At this point, we are going to go ahead and move on to item E2, which is Board Action on Student Expulsion Case Number 0910-02. Is there a motion?
Move to uphold the findings, well, the stipulated agreement?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that to Mr. Herron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It carries four zero with Dr. Noel absent for the vote. We're now going to move on to item F1, which is the First Reading of Board Policies and Administrative Regulations in the 4,000 Series on Personnel. It is eight oh five. I'm going to stop this discussion on the 4,000s at eight forty for us to take our break. What I'm going to do is just run through by page number. Page number's in the lower right-hand. My first one is on number three. Does anybody have anything before number three? For me, number three is Board Policy 4020, Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace. I just wanted to note, the fourth paragraph down, "An employee shall abide by the terms of this policy and notify the district within five days of any criminal or drug or alcohol statute conviction, which he or she receives for a violation occurring in the workplace." And I just wanted to note that it appears from that that if an employee comes to work under the influence of drugs or alcohol, it sounds like the police need to be called since it requires a conviction. And I just wanted to note that because I thought that was, that was not something that I had realized before.
That are identified as protected, protected classes by the state or sometimes by the federal government. And so I don't know that we, about what our prerogative is in adding additional class groups. But I, I always, I was interested in adding where it says they won't be discrimination against or harassment of, on the basis of race, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I wanted to add language and citizenship status.
All right. So this is Board Policy 4030, Non-Discrimination in Employment, Language and Citizenship Status. I want to point out, however, for employees and job applicants that they're required to be citizens of the United States.
Are they? They can't, we don't have any employees who are just authorized to work in the United States?
They may be, they may have visas.
Right, they have their proper paperwork and proper documentation to work in the United States. Just as a notation, and obviously what we're following is the CASB, the, the board policies that are standardized. So these are very much standardized statewide on these policies that you see before you.
Right. So I was thinking of non-citizen residents.
Which, which would have the proper paperwork, documentation that we obtain upon employment, either, you know, again, proper documentation that is as noted on their I-9 form.
Could you say citizenship status given proper documentation?
But, but this is about unlawful discrimination. It's not about.
No, that's what I'm saying.
So I suppose we could say citizenship status because it would be lawful for them not to be employed by us.
I, I thought unlawful discrimination was very well-defined and precisely defined in law. And I'm, I'm very nervous about using that phrase without having Craig Price here to, to help us.
All right. So let's make a note to explore that, shall we?
Thank you.
And what was your next one, Mrs. Cordero?
It was on page nine. And that was, I'm sorry, it's on, it's actually on page 10. But the, the AR starts on page nine, AR 4031, on Complaints Concerning Discrimination in Employment. I just wanted to clarify, under level, where it says level two, and then it lists what the written complaint should include. The first one says, "The complainant's name, address, and telephone number." I wanted to be clear about who this complaint is given to. Is that information given to the person against whom the complaint is being filed? Because I could certainly imagine how that would have a chilling effect, having to give someone that you feel has aggrieved you in some way, your phone number and address might actually prevent some people from filing a complaint.
I believe as it's referenced, I believe in the 4030, the complaints are directed to personnel, Director Personnel, and that's where the formal complaint is, is given.
But it also says on page one of this AR 4031, number five, "Complaint proceeding shall be kept confidential insofar as appropriate."
Right. But I thought it also said that the complainant gets, I mean, that the person for, I'm sorry, I'm not finding it, that the person against whom the complaint is filed also gets information regarding the complaint. Yeah. "All parties involved in allegations of discrimination shall be notified when the complaint is filed, when a complaint meeting or hearing is scheduled, and when the decision is, ruling is made. The party shall be notified of their right to appeal the decision to the next level." So I just wanted to clarify whether the person's address and, clearly it seems to me appropriate that they would know the person who's making the complaint. But their address and telephone number, would that go to the other party or not?
That normally, no, does not. It's just they're.
But maybe we want to put the words in there.
If these are employees, don't we already have their address and telephone number?
We do. But what I'm saying is.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah. They, they are not released at all.
We have it. Who else needs it?
So maybe we can just clarify that that is not given to the other party.
Okay. So that's on this, page two of three in AR 4031.
Mrs. Parker? Yes. Actually, since we went right past page nine, I did have a question about page nine. Number six, where it talks about the, the records are not held in the employee's individual personal file, but in a separate complaint file. And I certainly understand why that might happen. But are there points where that information ever intersects? Because I could understand a situation where the district might be looking at an employee for another position, for instance, in the district, and wouldn't come across that information in the employee file. I might not know it existed in this confidential file.
Yeah. Complaints are not part of personnel files. They are very separate and are not at all related or correlated. And the employee knows what's in, what has been placed in their file. But complaints and results and, and anything that's related to that is not kept in, in, in the personnel file at all.
I will say that if a complaint results in a reprimand, a written reprimand, then that reprimand is placed in the employee's file with notification to the employee that it is placed in the file and notification that the employee may, may rebut or maybe address it as well in writing.
All right. I actually don't have anything, I thought it was seventeen, but it's actually seventy-nine is my next one. So where are you?
I thought you had seventeen, so I was, I have sixteen.
Sixteen.
And I, this is just a clarification because it's used, again, later in another one of, actually more than one of the other board policies or ARs. But on page sixteen, below the list of citations, it says, "Employees shall be responsible for the appropriate use of technology and shall use the district's technological resources primarily for purposes related to their employment." And I'm wondering why it says primarily for purposes related to their employment. What would be the reason for, or why would we want to say it doesn't have to be entirely for the purposes related to their employment? Because that comes up in some of the other ones, too. I, I'm wondering if there's a, you know, if there's a rationale for that. What's the reason for that?
It's simply a matter of practicality. If in your workday, you send an email to someone during your break and you use a district email, we don't restrict it, for instance, to only district matters. Or at night, we don't restrict it only to district matters.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to.
We worked to head it in that direction and make sure that people know that this is district property, it's a district resource, it's for work purposes, but we don't restrict its use.
All right. Anybody have anything before page seventy-nine?
Twenty-six.
Dr. Noel, page twenty-six.
I have twenty-three.
Oh, let's stop at twenty.
Let's, let's, Mrs. Cordero go first.
Mrs. Cordero at twenty-three.
I have twenty-two, and, yeah, it's actually twenty-two, sorry. Twenty, twenty-three.
This is Board Policy 4111, Recruitment and Selection.
And, and it says also forty-three, forty-two, eleven, and forty-three, eleven.
Crosses all categories.
I was concerned that nothing in our recruitment said that we were going to recruit diverse candidates. The only thing that it says is a wide range of candidates. So I was wondering how we might address that. And I thought in the first paragraph, after the first sentence, where it says, "We desire to employ the most highly qualified, et cetera, et cetera," that we might add a sentence that, "The board also desires a workforce that reflects the demographics of the district and student bodies." And then where it says, at the end of the second paragraph, "A wide range of candidates," I thought we could maybe say, "to ensure diversity among the candidates," since I think diversity has a different implication.
For me, I'm, I, for your second point, I, I'm, I would be completely in favor of that. For your first point, I'm a little concerned about state law and if we could run into any barriers with that. And so I, I would just would want to have that vetted through Mr. Price if, if we can put that language in. So if we could, again, explore, you raised lots of exploration questions there.
I believe we have run this by the attorney before, and we were constrained in one respect. And I think it was about, about ensuring diversity. And I think we settled on this language, "wide range of candidates." But, but we intended to get as close as we could to it. So let's go back to the attorney and revisit the issue.
And also, it may be in our existing policy, but because we don't have it in front of us, I don't, I'm not sure if it was addressed before.
That was one of my questions. Are we looking at what was in the policies? Or have these all been changed from what was in the policy? Not all been changed, but have there been changes made between this document and what's you would find on the website?
There are various changes that have been made. You'll find a lot of this matches identically what we have. Some of this doesn't match because we don't have a policy that addresses it at all. Others, we pulled in our existing language. If we've worked on that existing language within the last couple of years, we've pulled in that existing language, and you'll see that on the 9,000s as well.
I saw that, yeah.
So it's really all over the board. And it's really cleaner to take all the existing policies, cross through those existing policies, say, and say, "We're starting over. Let's look at the CSBA models with the new court rulings with the new ed codes and make sure all of those are in place as well."
Thank you.
But I would like to, in order, and it's also nice to save paper for us not to get the old policies. They are, I think most of 4,000s are online, the current ones. But also hard copies are here at the district. So I really, if there are any that you have questions about what was before, please, before we act on these, which won't, certainly won't be at this meeting.
And I will clarify that. And when we met and reviewed, Dr. Robertson, Chris, and Ann Peake, when we met along with Kitty from CSBA, very, very similar language. Again, the updates were, had to do with ed code and other government code, legal codes, things that needed to be streamlined or edited and just to update. So very few overall edits were made and changes were made in these board policies.
All right. We're on to page twenty-six, AR 4112, Appointment and Conditions of Employment. Dr. Noel?
Yes, I, I, there's some things that I just don't understand very well. Perhaps some of it would be helped by reconciling the syntax of the two sentences here. We're talking about all certificated personnel, the position.
The very first paragraph.
The very top of, of page twenty-six, Mrs. Cordero. "Upon recommendation from the superintendent." Anyway, the substantive issues have to do with if, there's a question first. Are these, are these the appointments we see on the consent agenda, most of these?
Yes.
So, so the board is approving, okay. Is the board approving an appointment by the superintendent? Or is the board appointing?
We, I think, I've always understood that we were approving, but I, I don't know if we have any in this. I can't remember. Do we have any in this? What does it say?
I think we approved the appointment.
Well, there's, there's been a little ambiguity about that off and on.
What's the one in this one?
Well, we can look into it.
And, and, but then the next question is, are there some cutoff points? Certainly, we don't do it for every position. But then you get up into directors and managers, management personnel in general. Are there, sometimes we come here and do it, sometimes we don't, I think. And it'd be very helpful to, just to get a clarification. Do we have a policy that says all of these? The ed code requires people of the title of superintendent, assistant superintendent, deputy superintendent, associate superintendent to be appointed by the board. I believe it's appoint, not approved, in, in an open meeting. But this seems to suggest that all of this is in an open meeting, but.
Well, these are certificated positions.
That's, that's the confusion I have. And, yeah, that's all.
And management and recruitment is a separate board policy.
Yes, we can, we can look. I don't actually know if it addresses it directly. I know it did in the old policies. But 4112 is for certificated teaching.
We have, we have certificated directors.
We do, but that's, that's kind of, that's a management.
That would be forty-three hundred.
It's a separate, it's going to be in the forty-three hundred section, a little bit towards the back.
Well, that needs to be reconciled, I think, clarified.
All right. Anything else before seventy-nine? Mrs. Cordero?
I had a couple of things on this one. And the first one comes up in a, in a couple of other places, too. But just generally, in our, in, at the very beginning, on page three in the Board Policy, Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace, it lists.
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
It's on page three, but I'm, it's related. It's on page three, but I'm, it's related, it's related to what my concern is on page twenty-six. On page three, it's talking about how the board may not employ or retain in employment persons involved, in persons convicted of a controlled substance offense, et cetera, et cetera. But then it goes on to say, "If any such conviction is reversed and the person acquitted in a new trial or the charges dismissed, his or her employment is no longer prohibited." Now, in this one, we have this whole series of, they can't have been convicted of any sex offense, et cetera, et cetera. But I didn't see that same clarification, that if the person is subsequently acquitted of the crime, that they are no longer restricted from being hired. And we have other things that where we restrict people. And I'm just wondering if that, is, is that a blanket? Like.
Wouldn't we judge that as not convicted if it's?
Well, except that in, in, in the first one, we say, "They may not employ or retain any in employment, any person convicted." And then it goes on to specifically say, because if you were convicted, I mean, if you had two trials, for example, the first one you're convicted at, the second one you're, it's reversed, I guess you could theoretically say they were convicted at one point. Because we specifically say in the first one, "If any such conviction is reversed," and then it goes on to, to rescind that, is that, does that hold true for every, all of our policies that say, if people are convicted of X, we won't hire them?
I would think it would as a sort of a blanket overall.
So can we either put that somewhere where it says it applies to everything or embed it in all of the policies that have that restriction?
Make a note of that.
And then the only other thing that I have a question about, it's not a recommendation because I have a feeling we can't do anything about it, but it's in number twelve on page twenty-seven, "The oath of or affirmation of allegiance required by the government code." I know that it's an oath of allegiance to the state of California and the constitution of the state of California.
Yes.
Now, we recently had a constitutional amendment that added to the California constitution that I personally would not like to pledge allegiance to. What, what happens when the constitution gets amended and people are being asked to pledge allegiance to something that they absolutely morally and ethically disagree with? Because in that oath, we always say, "I take this oath freely," but it's not free because they, we can't hire them if they don't take it. It's, it's quite coercive. So I don't know that we can do anything about that, but I would like us to deal, to try to grapple with that in some way.
Yeah. I don't think that we can at this point. Certainly, there have been court cases around it that have been quite interesting. And really, it's been resolved in different ways, so.
Even the assistants in the psych labs had to take the loyalty oath to feed the rats.
All right. Next, anything else before?
I don't know what that means, but okay.
Seventy-nine. All right, let's jump ahead to seventy-nine, which is AR forty-one-one-three, "Assignment to departmentalized classes outside credential authorization." Again, this is one that, there was nothing in here that I wanted to change, but I did want to call attention to it because it is not, it is something that came up. We have had teachers come forward that had needed approval on this. And it is, it's a category that's much broader than I had realized was possible.
Can I go back to four, page, page forty-four?
Page forty-four.
I was just curious about the category of resource specialists. Isn't that what we call the three that we?
No.
Those are program specialists. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see. For me, next was page eighty-seven. Anybody before page eighty-seven? Eighty-seven is AR four-one-one-five, "Evaluation supervision for certificated personnel." And I just flagged that because of the issue of race to the top and that we need, we may need to come back to this to talk about what is used in evaluation and how we talk about that with our teachers' union. And so I, I don't think there's anything that precludes us from going ahead, because this is very close to our existing policy, but it is something that may need to be changed.
In our discussion with Kitty, by the way, just the contracts, union contracts, CSBA and SBTA would supersede board policy because it's contract. This is used as a guide. But what is in the board, is in the bargaining unit contracts would rule. And the evaluation as it's outlined in the teacher's contract would be, what would follow.
I had circle number one on page eighty-eight. Your comment just, I mean, it seemed to me that if we have a contract that we, that supersedes this, then this should be changed to the contract.
Not necessarily. Again, this is used as a, as a guide, but our contract is what we agree and negotiate with the teachers' union.
What does number one mean on the top of eighty-eight?
Not sure if I can answer, address that one. Dr. Service, you may want to.
Means that as part of the evaluation criteria, we would assess the, the performance of the staff member in, in the student's progress toward meeting state standards.
And can we do that? Is that in opposition to the contract?
No, no. In fact, that's very much a part of goal setting and very much an expectation.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that you can use the CSTs.
Right.
Mrs. Deacon.
Because we see in the line below, we actually cite ed code forty-four-six-six-two, which says we can't use the published norms standardized by the standardized test. And I actually had written race to the top all over this page, too. So I think we're all thinking in the same lines. I had one other question on this one under evaluation results. It says, "Certificated instructional employees shall receive a written copy of their evaluation no later than thirty days before the last scheduled school day of the year in which the evaluation takes place." To me, that seems like a long time. I mean, if someone was evaluated in November, would we really be waiting until, excuse me?
Yeah, in fact, I'd like to move this up consistent with our contract language.
Okay, so this is not consistent with the contract and we should modify it so it reflects that?
April fifteenth?
All right. So if we can look at the actual contract language and then see where we can go. All right. My next flag is on page ninety-two. Anybody before page ninety-two? All right, I pulled page, ninety-two. This is a new AR four-one-one-seven-point-one-one, "Pre-retirement Part-Time Employment." And I had a lot of concerns about this. First off was number one, which is, "The option to reduce the employee's workload shall be exercised at the request of the employee and can be revoked only with the mutual consent of the superintendent or designee in the employee."
I was concerned about costs, too. I mean, that was one of the first things that came to mind.
There are cost issues. There's the ability to fill a part-time position if somebody wants to only work point eight. And when you find somebody that's point two, I think it's, it always needs to be based on what's best for students. And this, this doesn't necessarily fit that. So I would question whether we need AR four-one-one-seven-point-one-one at all. And so that's a question. It's, this is not something that's in the contract.
I will tell you that. That was a discussion that we had when we met. And we were all in agreement, Dr. Robertson, myself, and Anne Peake, that we would wait for the board's direct, direct directions on this. We no longer offer it. It was, it used to be referred to as the Willie Brown reduction years ago. This has not been implemented in twenty-plus years. But it is an existing policy that's.
It is. It wasn't online, so it doesn't mean it's.
Well, that's, that's through CSBA. And so we kept that in there and felt it was something that you, the board, needed to review.
Okay. Thank you. Well, my, my personal vote would be that it just come out.
We haven't used it in twenty years, I think.
The Willie Brown legislation still exists, though, right? And people still have, people could still take advantage of that, can't they?
Well, it still exists. However, we've not implemented it here in the district and/or have offered it as an option as far as long as I've been here.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to, my next one's one-forty-two. Anybody have anything before one-forty-two?
So it's thirty-two or one-forty-two?
One-forty-two. Okay, one-forty-two. It's AR forty-one-twenty-one, "Temporary Substitute Personnel." And my just question was in the second paragraph, "In addition, after September first of any school year, the Board of Education may employ substitute personnel for the remainder of the school year." And I just wondered how that played in with our year-round schools and with a calendar that might change. I don't know how that works. So I don't know if it's, if it's more relevant to say, one week after school starts than, rather than a specific date. That's just a question I have, so if you.
Well, or peg it to the start of the school year, first day of student attendance or something like that. We'll, we'll take a look at the date.
Okay. If you want to explore that, Mr. Heron?
I'm sorry, back on one-twenty-four, "Political Activities of Employees." Does that affect us at all as board members? The very first paragraph?
We are not employees.
Okay.
Explicitly.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. My next, my next flag is page two-sixty-one. Anybody have anything before two-hundred-and-sixty-one?
Oh, yeah.
Dr. Noel?
Oh, yeah, on the second page, page one-seventy-seven?
One-seventy-seven.
"The board and the public, the board and the superintendent shall keep the public informed about the progress of negotiations and the ways in which the negotiation may affect district goals."
How? I saw that, too. What's that mean?
It's, it's something we don't do.
Well, it sounds like negotiating in bad faith as well, so.
Well, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. I like, I like the concept, I like the concept. And in fact, the, the whole, this whole discussion we've had about initial positions, it seems to me that the, the spirit of the, of the, of the law and the idea is that the public knows what issues are going to be negotiated. And at the end of it, it's going to get a tentative agreement. And this seems to be saying, in between, they're going to be kind of kept informed. When you say it that way, it sounds pretty reasonable. But again, the question is how?
Mrs. Cordero?
Yeah, I didn't flag this one, but I agree that, that, to me, does sound a little bit like, I don't even know what, I don't know if I want to say bargaining in bad faith, but sort of bargaining in the public. What I, the part that I particularly am concerned about is the part that says, and how, and the ways in which negotiations may affect district goals. Because that, to me, just sounds like, I don't know, like we'd be out there in the, you know, we could be out there in the public saying, "If they don't agree to X, we won't be able to accomplish, you know, Y." And I don't particularly like having that in our, in our board policy.
Where you see it, I'm sure we've all seen these situations, are when boards and, or districts and unions are heading towards impasse, they're in difficult situations. And that's when you'll start to see the, you know, the superintendent making sort of press releases about the district version as the union is giving its press releases about their version. And I suspect that that's what CSBA is getting at. But I don't know that it needs to be in board policy. Dr. Noel?
I just, I want to ask, is this from the ed code? Because I, I don't recognize it. And I've, I've read a lot of that stuff.
We'll go back and find out. I don't believe it is.
Because my guess, so this is something the CSBA dreamed up or, or we dreamed up?
It would be CSBA, I'm sure.
Let's blame it on the CSBA. And then let's get rid of it.
Well, I was just going to say, as, as a newcomer, I, I was under the impression this was frequently done because honestly, I've read numerous accounts in the press of, of when negotiations potentially read in paths. Each side is using whatever tools they can to develop momentum for their side. I'm not advocating we do it, but I thought it was common practice.
Well, I could commit to a public presentation after every negotiation session. How would that be, Lane?
Lane loves that idea.
All right. Anything else before two-sixty-one?
I have, I have two-sixty-one also.
You have two-sixty-one. Yeah, page two-hundred-and-sixty-one. Two-hundred-and-sixty-one is exhibit forty-two-nineteen-point-two-one, "Code of Ethics Classified Employees." And here is my concern, and this one was number nine. I, I think it's great for us to have Code of Ethics. We have one for ourselves currently. There's one for certificated. I haven't checked in this. I haven't checked if there's a current one for certificated. I'm sure that there's not a current one for classified.
Yeah, this is, this is new. We do not have this for classified. We kept it in there, obviously. This was part of CSBA. It's very supportive of it.
Oh, Mrs. Deacon.
I, I'm curious to hear that it's new because my one concern was on item five, and this is just being very picky, but it, it says, "Be a resourceful person who readily adapts himself to different kinds of work." And I know this is not our document because I'm sure we wouldn't have done that, but.
Which is interesting because it does come out of CSBA and their Code of Ethics and their.
But we can modify their Code of Ethics for our own purposes, I see.
I believe so.
I'm not sure, I'm just not sure that the CSBA's Code of Ethics belongs in our board policy, even though I approve of most of the things on the Code of Ethics.
I have the same difficulty pulling in an organization's Code of Ethics and including it in our board policy. I could certainly see some Code of Ethics for classified employees that, that borrows heavily from the CSBA document.
Certainly, the reference to number nine is inappropriate to be in our board policy.
Well, it's because this is their exact Code of Ethics.
One of the discussions we had.
I think Dr. Service is right. Maybe this could be depersonalized or de.
Well, part of the orientations for classified employees is that they receive a packet from CSBA for potential enrollment into their, to their union. And my understanding, and I'll follow up to make sure that this is part of that packet that they receive.
Right. And that seems perfectly appropriate.
That's why I said that it fits in there. I was fine with that. That comes from their organization.
I think that I, I would prefer, if possible, for it to be more tied into the Code of Ethics that we have for teachers. Obviously, there would be some differences, but to make it more closely aligned to that. At this time, it is eight-forty-two. So with no objection from a board majority, I am going to go ahead and call a break. Dr. Noel?
We haven't gotten to two-seventy-six?
We hadn't gotten to two-seventy-six yet.
We're going to break before we get there.
We're going to break and take a stop because we need to go on to item F-two. So what we'll do is come back with just these last set. So please keep your notes on the four thousands. We'll come back and just address anything past page two-sixty-one as soon as possible. So at this time, we will go ahead and take a fifteen-minute break. Mrs. Cordero, what did you want to do?
I was just going to suggest that we just keep our packet so that we don't.
Wonderful. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Time for a break. Board members, we are returning now and moving on to item F-two, which is the first reading of board bylaws in the nine-thousand series. which is the first reading of board bylaws in the 9000 series. This is, just as a note, these are the bylaws that have changes to them proposed by the CSBA or by the district. I did have, because of that, our current board policy 9006 was not included. And that's our Code of Ethics. So I did ask that that be on the dais for us this evening, if anybody has suggestions for board bylaw 9006. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Yes, Dr. Noel?
I do have some circled items on here. Is, are you inviting discussion on?
I'm, I'm about to start going through.
Starting with 9006?
Well, I'll start, I'll start with the 9000, just, I don't know if there's anybody that has anything on just page 1, 2, or 3?
9000, right?
Yeah, that's, that's board bylaw 9000, role of the board.
I, I have one.
Yes, Dr. Noel?
I say this just about every time we talk about this. To me, the tide is first for the major responsibilities of any legislative body is oversight. So I say number one before number one, oversight of district operations to ensure compliance with the law and relevant public policies.
Mrs. Cordero?
I'm sorry. I, I think that that's, I felt comfortable that that's handled in the preamble, or the preface, or whatever we want to call it. It says, "The governing board has been elected by the community to provide leadership and citizen oversight of the district." To me, of the district means all those things.
Well, my, my view, Mrs. Cordero, is that, that we wouldn't have had the problems we've had in special education or in finance, had the board been doing its job at oversight. And so I just, in my opinion, you can't stress oversight enough. A preamble is, is great, but I, I think it needs to be said very explicitly, very high on the prior, on the list. That's just my opinion.
Can you read that again? Can you read that again? What do you want?
Oversight of district operations to ensure compliance with the law and relevant public policies.
Mrs. Deacon?
I, I actually thought the existing preamble was fine. I, I understand your concern about maybe we're not always doing it, and, but I don't know if changing the words changes the behavior, so I, I think, I just want to be more conscious of, of our behavior and complying with what exists. I, I think the, the word leadership is appropriate.
Any other comments on it?
I'm sorry. I'm, come, tell me again exactly where that would go.
I'd put it number one, but I'd settle for number three or four. I, I think its location is not as important as, as just a really clear statement of it.
You couldn't incorporate that in the first paragraph?
I wouldn't put it as a, as a, I'm not going to quarrel over that. I'd put, put it wherever you want. I don't think of it as a preamble, but, but it, if you, I, I guess, I guess maybe, maybe it's a good place for it. If you think it'd be better up there.
My suggestion would be that you, you incorporate it into the first sentence. So it says, "The governing board has been elected by the community to provide leadership and citizen oversight of district operations to ensure compliance with the law and relevant policies."
See, that's fine with me. I thought it got a little particular, more particular because of the reference to the law. But that's fine with me.
I think that's a good place for it.
Okay. Well, that certainly puts it up high.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Noel? All right, so that would be the suggestion for the first sentence. Page five is a new board bylaw, 912. This is board member electric- Oh, sorry. Does anybody have anything on 9006, the board, Code of Ethics?
Again, I have concerns when I read this again, again every time, and I just want to express them. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th and 6th bullets. Work with other board members to establish effective board policies and to delegate authorities. 6, or the 6th bullet. Communicate to other board members and the superintendent. Now, the Brown Act has a lot to say about that, and, and, and clearly, this is not recommending a violation of the Brown Act, which means work with one other board member to do that. And make sure that that other board member doesn't work with another board member. It's, you know, you get into that, and, and I've always been, always felt that that wording was, needed some tweaking.
Mrs. Deacon?
Oh, I think I read it differently, because I thought that this was talking about what we're doing right now, working collectively in public.
Work with other board members at meetings, at board meetings.
I don't think it needs to be as specific as that, because most of the time it would be, most of the time it would be at board meetings, but there are times when we are assigned, you know, to, to a committee, for example. And it might, I think it should include that.
How about in, in, not compliance, but according to, according to law, comma, do those things. Or at, or put at the end, according to law.
Mr. Herron?
I would just like to change it enough, in enough places, in order to get rid of the very first sentence that talks about this being developed in 1999. To be, you know, the world has changed since 1999, and there's got to be different ways to say some of these things. I would like to be able to get rid of that first sentence.
Well, and how would you do that, since this is from the Code of Ethics from the National School Boards Association from 1999, and it needs to have its-
I think we just need a Code of Ethics. I don't think it matters where it comes from.
I think that this is a question of citing your source.
That's what I say, change it enough so it no longer comes from that source.
That would probably require significant rewriting, because it's, is it proprietary in some way? It belongs to them, because they've developed it, and we're just adopting it?
I don't know that it's necessarily proprietary, but it certainly is from the National School Boards Association.
May I suggest that there are other references in the other policies that simply refer to as a CF or, or cite as a note toward the end of the policy where, where this is from?
So you'd just have it start as, as a member of my Board of Education, and then at the bottom, you would cite your source?
Yes.
That, that would be better than-
Okay. That's fine with me also. So, Dr. Noel, you had raised the point of work with the other board members to establish effective board policies and to delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent, like, within the parameters of the, of the law?
Something like, somewhere in there consistent with, with law and public policy, or consistent with the Brown Act. I, I, I'm not going to-
Mrs. Cordero?
You got the idea.
I was wondering if we could just add that at the very beginning, so that it covers all of them. You know, "As a member of my Board of Education, I will strive to improve public education. And to that end, and as consistent with existing law, I will, blah, blah, blah."
And as consistent with existing law? Any objections to that? All right, any other comments on 9006?
Could I add something?
Yes.
At the risk of, I think that the next bullet point is potentially more problematic than the one that you just looked at. Communicate with other board members?
That's the one we're talking about.
Oh, I thought it was work with other board members.
It was both. It was bullet 5 and 6.
Forgive me.
So, and so with that, and as consistent with existing law, at the very beginning, that would hopefully address that one as well, so make sure we're communicating at board meetings. All right, 912, board member electronic communications. Did anybody have any suggestions or comments for this section? Mrs. Cordero?
I just have a question. Because we have two, what I think of as fairly significant notes, or actually, three. What is the, sort of the function, or what status does the note have in a board policy?
This, the note is something that would be deleted. It's not part of the board bylaw.
Okay, so it won't be there.
This is just, this is just informational from the CSBA.
Okay.
Any suggestions, Mr. Herron?
Well, on page 6, after the first box, there's a paragraph, and it talks about, "Any complaint or request for information should be forwarded to the superintendent in accordance with board bylaws and protocols, so that it may receive proper consideration and be handled through the appropriate district process. As appropriate communication received from the press should be forwarded to the designated district spokesperson." In reality, you know, we get calls from the press. In reality, we get complaints, and many times, there are, we get them because they haven't been handled already. I mean, we get copies of emails and complaints. And so just to send them back to the people they're complaining about seems like it's, has a problem inherent with it. So I'm not quite sure what to, what to do about that, but it just, it doesn't seem to be reality in some cases. And we get an email complaining about something. And usually, maybe it's to all of us. And it's about the current administration at a school, at, you know, district, at, you know. And so are we expected to get that and do nothing with it, or get it and forward it back to Barbara, or to?
Well, it says to the superintendent. I mean, I think that most of the time, you know, board members cannot resolve complaints. I mean, we simply can't, and so we, we need to forward it to the superintendent, although we may certainly address the person who has emailed us also. But usually, it's going to have to go through district admin in order to be resolved. Mrs. Cordero?
Yeah, I wasn't quite reading it that way, but I'm, but I do, I think it goes kind of back to, to one of the issues we ran in, ran into before, when we had the whole discussion about the appropriateness of forwarding somebody's email without their permission. If somebody emails me with a complaint, I, you know, and I, I am very clear that I can not necessarily resolve that, that issue. But I'm not sure I want to be required to forward it automatically without getting the emailer's permission to forward it.
So should we add, should be forwarded with permission? I like that, Mrs. Cordero.
Thank you.
And I also interpreted-
Mrs. Deacon?
Forwarding a little bit different, because I wasn't taking it literally. I was taking it more that if I got a complaint, I might in turn email a person who I thought would appropriately handle it, and say, "Can you follow up on this?" So that I'm forwarding the concern, but not someone's specific email.
Maybe forwarded is the wrong word. Maybe it should be, "Any complaint or request for information should be brought to the attention of the superintendent?"
What if it's a complaint against the superintendent?
Well, then it's, then that's our job.
But how does that, how does this paragraph take care of what Bob just said?
But, well, I assume that even if we, that even if it were a complaint against the superintendent, we would still want to make the superintendent aware of the complaint. I mean, if we have a complaint against any, any personnel, we would make that person aware of the complaint. Wouldn't we?
I would agree, and I, I mean, I think the process would be different, you know, I mean, we would not be delegating resolution. If it was about the superintendent, we would be stepping up and, and taking action. But that would be a distinction, depending on who was being complained about. I also had a question about the, the line about the press, because it, it says pretty specifically, "Shall be forwarded." But I think we all agree that having different perspectives, we would all want to be able to talk to the, to the press to provide, you know, our own viewpoints, and that we wouldn't necessarily always be turning comments over to the district spokesperson. On the other hand, if there was a question that someone brought to me about numbers that I didn't know precisely, I would certainly direct them to the Public Information Officer. But, but I would want to make sure that we're not, you know, telling people that they have to necessarily forward those contacts.
Do you think the "as appropriate" is enough?
What does that mean?
That means that if you feel it's appropriate, you forward it on to the district spokesperson to get the information to the press.
But does it also mean, "As appropriate, if I think I want to answer it myself, I can?"
If you can. As long, I mean, it's always clear when you are communicating with the press, that unless you're the president of the board, acting on the authority of the board in your communication, you're, you're speaking as an individual board member. But I think that's always been pretty clear in our, in our quotes that I see in the, in the press. So, Dr. Noel?
Board members, I'm, I'm just going to stay on that paragraph. "Board members shall make every effort to ensure that their electronic communications conform to the same standards and protocols established for other forms of communications." Can you tell me where that, where those standards and protocols are, are listed?
I think we'd have to go to the existing policy, the existing bylaws, which we don't have in front of us.
Well, but this is a very generalized statement. This is saying, this is singling out one form of communication. It says that they must conform to standards that apply to other forms of communication, without telling us what those standards are. And I, my problem is, see, I just can't remember what they are. In fact, I can't remember ever seeing them.
I'm not aware of any.
There, there are-
We could take a look at it.
There are some, and it's really specifically talking about communication, for the most part, with the press.
That's one of the standards and protocols?
But I'd have to look that up. So let's, let's seek out more information on that.
Well, I want to pursue those, some of these thoughts, because if that's linked to some kind of constraint over what board members can say to the press, that seems to be that, that we're trying through a bylaw to do something to, like, change the Constitution. And I, for one, don't want a majority, or even a colleague on the board, telling me what I can and can't say to any member of the public, including the press.
No, I think that it is, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up in front of me right now. I'm not texting to Mr. Price. I just, I think it's, yeah, it's 910, public statements, which we don't have in front of us. And let me see if I can pull up the bylaw here, see how long it is. It says, "The Board of Education recognizes-"
What number were you reading?
It's, it's 910, and we don't have it in front of us. It's an existing bylaw. And so I'm reading it now from the web. And it's, "The Board of Education recognizes the rights of board members to freely express their views and encourages open discussion of issues during the board meeting. The Board believes that effective board members have a responsibility to express themselves, whether in agreement or disagreement with the board majority, in ways that promote the Board's ability to govern the district. When speaking to community groups, the media, or other members of the public, individual board members should recognize that their statements may be perceived as reflecting the views and positions of the Board. Board members have a responsibility to identify personal viewpoints as such, and not as the viewpoint of the Board. All public statements authorized to be made on behalf of the Board shall be made by the Board President, or if appropriate, by the superintendent or other designated representative."
So, so with the first sentence, then, it should really read, "Board members shall make every effort to ensure that their electronic communications conform to," and what's that policy number?
Board bylaw 910.
910. That's a lot. That pins it down a bit.
Yeah.
And it's something no one could object to, in my opinion. Does that, does that then- Does that, does that then obviate the need for the last sentence? Seems to me that the last sentence kind of contradicts 9010.
As appropriate communication received from the press, well, it's talking about specifically via email. As appropriate communication received from the press shall be forwarded to the designated district spokesperson.
I read that, I read that as a phone call, even.
But this is about electronic communications, so...
Telephone.
I mean, we could...
So, you're saying, this is saying that, that if you get a question from the press, you have to forward it to the district spokesperson?
No, it says "as appropriate."
What's that, okay, this is a reductio ad absurdum, what does that "as appropriate" mean?
That's going to be your opinion as to whether or not you can answer the question as an individual board member, or if it's something that needs to be, information that the media would be, be better served by getting from the designated district spokesperson. Mrs. Cordero?
Yeah, I just, I think this is the conversation we just had a couple of minutes ago, perhaps Dr. Noel didn't hear it, that we were saying, it would be up to you, it would be your decision to decide whether it was appropriate or not.
Mrs. Deacon?
Maybe we need to say that, I mean, because I was confused, too, when I first read it, and, and when you scrutinize it, of course, "as appropriate" makes sense, but maybe we need either, and initially, I thought we could just delete the whole sentence, I, it seems common sense to me, and done in practice routinely, I don't know if we need to keep this at all, but if we do, then maybe we want to specify, at their discretion, board members may, you know, for press communication to appropriate district spokespeople.
I would just change this from the "shall" to a "may."
"As appropriate, and at their discretion," board members may, may follow bylaw 9010 and the Constitution of the United States. The First Amendment of the Constitution, is that what this is boiling down to?
No, this is "as appropriate communication received," and maybe we should say "electronic" again, just to reiterate it. Electronic communication received from the press may be forwarded to the designated district spokesperson.
Would, would you repeat the verb in that sentence again?
May, "as appropriate electronic communication received from the press may be forwarded to the designated district spokesperson."
This is, this is, in my opinion, this is treating us like children.
Any other comments on 9012?
Yes.
Yes, Mr., Dr. Noel.
Well, I think, I want to comment on the note in the first box, the note in the first box is talking about a Brown Act that I've never read, I didn't, because it says it's the Brown Act, it refers to the same rules of confidentiality that are applicable to other forms of communication, and, I mean, I, I understand confidentiality with respect to closed session, but I, I just don't recall the Brown Act, which I thought was about meetings, setting forth rules of confidentiality, and I don't, and while the Brown Act does include electronic communications as a subset of the things it's talking about, communications, it doesn't single them out as being any different than any other form of communications, on quite the contrary, there are communications of all kinds, including...
Mr. Herron?
I think all that first box is saying is, remember the Brown Act, but be extra cautious, because electronic communication is, is much easier to become involved with the Brown Act, because you can forward and share so easily, and then the person who's receiving it can share so easily, I think it's just an admonition, remember what the Brown Act says, and by the way, be extra cautious, because this is dangerous territory at times.
Okay, well, then, the last sentence of the, of the main text is, gets close to what you're saying, Mr. Herron, "Board members shall exercise caution so as to ensure that electronic communications," I would cross out the word "electronic," because all communications are not used as a means for the board to deliberate, I mean, it's, that's, the board's a corporate body, for, as a means to, are not used for deliberate, for deliberation contrary to the provisions of the Brown Act.
Mrs. Deacon?
If the board's deliberating, it's not a problem.
But it's just the board to deliberate outside of an agendized board meeting.
Could we ask Mr. Price to elaborate on the same rules of confidentiality here?
Yes, first of all, remember what's in the box, the note, the policy, that's just an explanation that's posted on the CSBA website and alert, and I believe that the language there is muddled and unclear when it relates to confidentiality and ties it into the Brown Act, and if it was intended to be part of a policy, I'd want to spend more time on it, but I think it's, it's irrelevant to your deliberation. The last sentence of the first paragraph, in terms of it referring to electronic communications, while the same principle holds true more broadly, this whole board policy is limited to electronic communications, so, that would make sense to me to have it be the way it is.
Any other comments on 9012?
Okay, well, Mr. Price just got my second point where I was just gonna delete electronic again.
All right, any comments on 9124? This is the attorney, Mrs. Deacon?
I had a question under subheading "Contacting Legal Counsel," the second paragraph there says, "Individual board members other than the Board President may not seek advice from district legal counsel on matters of district business unless so authorized by a majority of the Board," and I was just wondering, does that reflect current practice?
I believe so, I'm not sure if we have a 9124, we do. Note to self, have the old bylaws sitting up here next time, just one moment, Dr. Noel.
But I just want to say, I think the question is about not current policy, but current practice.
Right. Yeah, it has to be with authorization of the Board. I don't know if it's current practice, I mean, Mr. Price could address that, I'm sure...
Well, it's current practice, I mean, those requests come to me, I take them to the attorney, they come to the Board President, she takes them to the attorney, sometimes there's a suggestion made here, we don't vote on it, usually the Board President or I just follow up on it.
Right, and it, there have been times when an individual board member has made a request of Mr. Price, but Mr. Price, as far as I know, has always turned to me, or, maybe he does to you as well, and asked for permission to go forward with those, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
No, I think that covers it.
But can, can I just clarify, then, because this says, "unless authorized by a majority of the Board," not the Board President.
Well, I think it's been, become like, is this a question that the Board President would like answered?
Okay.
Any other comments on this one? All right, let's move ahead to 9200, limits of board member authority, any comments on that one? Then there's, Dr. Noel?
Individual board members do not have the authority to resolve complaints. Any board member approached directly by a person with a complaint should refer the complaint to the superintendent or designee, so that the problem may receive proper consideration and be handled through appropriate district processes. Much like oversight, I think handling complaints is a responsibility of an elected representative of the people, and, and while I get the thrust of this, I don't, and I think that it would work most of the time, there are times when you don't want to handle a complaint that way, and the constituent may not want it handled that way, and I just, I, I feel this is unnecessarily constraining.
And this is new CSBA language, this paragraph?
Recently, I had a complaint, in fact, I shared it with you, Mrs. Parker, from a constituent, and my first, my first impulse was to call a staff member, who I knew, knew all about that, it was that staff member's area of expertise, I believe that staff member, in answering, CC'd the superintendent, and perhaps I should have CC'd the superintendent, I think I did it by telephone, and the thing got, got a lot of information, I could give the, the parents back the information, they, and this thing kind of worked itself out, satisfactorily, as it turned out, I thought it was a very, very, a very good example of, of successful complaint handling, and I don't know whether, whether you ever even knew about it, but I think, I think you got in the loop at some point.
Well, if I was CC'd, I probably did.
He did, although, a lot of this was happening when he was away over the summer.
Oh, was that when that was?
Yeah.
But I, but I think, I mean, that, that's an important function of an elected representative, ease the way through the complaint process.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I would say, based on my own experience, I think we probably all do this and have done this, but the key is that, it could be the superintendent, or, or the language here says, "or designee," so it might be a principal, or it might be Mrs. Sowaski, or Dr. Robertson, that we would approach.
Well, it's interesting, because we, it's like, where does the resolution of complaint, it's, it's kind of a fine line, we can't, we can't resolve complaints by ourselves, we always have to include somebody in, so, I don't know if this is just kind of unnecessary, Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I actually like this language, because I agree that we do not have the authority to resolve the complaint, we can't, we do not have, and, and I don't think we should try to assert that authority, I think if we, for example, go into a situation where we're telling a staff member that they have to do X, Y, or Z in order to resolve this complaint, we've overstepped our bounds. Now, that's very different than helping a constituent navigate through the process of resolving a complaint. If a, if a constituent wants to know, who do I talk to, how do I go about getting information, what are the, what are the, the steps I'm supposed to follow, or what are the options, what's the board policy on this, et cetera, that's not the resolution of the complaint, that's just making information known, but I personally think that we should retain this, this language, because we're not the ones who resolve the complaint, and you know, we don't, if I have a complaint about, you know, military funding, I don't go directly to the President to resolve it, that, the, I don't, I don't think that's our, our role or responsibility, but I do think, see that as a very different thing than helping a constituent understand the process that you would go through.
Or doing what we can to help them through that process.
Yeah, and even help them acquire information, et cetera, but still, at some point, gets resolved by somebody else.
Well, I agree, having this language actually helps us as board members, because it allows us to remind the public that as individual board members, we do not have this authority, and so, I, I definitely would like to keep it, I think it's important.
Okay, any other comments on 9200? All right, then there's 9220, governing board elections, I don't know if anybody had thoughts on that, and Board bylaw 9223, filling vacancies, 9230, orientation. Then there's 9310, board policies.
Can I just go back really quickly to 9230? I just want to say that I think that the fact that the Board, and it's usually the superintendent, offers an orientation to candidates who are seeking this office in election, is really a gesture of goodwill, and something that is, really serves the community well, because most entities don't do that, if you want to run for that office, you, you run, and I think the fact that we actually take time to, to provide candidates with that kind of orientation, really helps whomever gets elected to become a better board member, so I just wanted to, I think that's a great thing.
Okay, any comments on the board policy section, 9310? Moving on, then, to 9320, meetings and notices. Then, we're at 9322, agenda meetings, agenda meeting materials. Mr. Herron?
On agenda preparation, in going through some old minutes, I saw that we used to have our vision and goals as part of, right at the front of the agenda, which this sort of says we should do, do we do that now?
No.
I don't think so. Is that a sentence that should be eliminated?
No, I, I think that what, what the CSBA is getting to with this, is that what you're talking about in your meeting is, you know, the, the items that you have on your agenda should be ones that are directed towards the district's vision and goals, and the Board's focus on student learning, rather than get, getting distracted by items that, for example, could go on the consent agenda, things like that.
I just noticed in the, in the past, that they were actually listed right there on the front of the agenda, and at some point, you stopped it. I'd have to go back and, and go back two minutes.
Go back and look at it and see what you think.
Going back two minutes.
They've changed over the years quite a bit, in various ways.
It's the Paperwork Reduction Act.
Yeah, I think so.
Here it is, here's the vision, anyway.
Any others on 9322?
I just, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm at 9223.
All right, yes, anything on, you're still on 9322, Mr. Herron?
On 31, I underlined, under consent items. At the request of any member of the Board, any item on the consent agenda shall be removed and given individual consideration for action as a regular item, a regular agenda item. Because it's a, is switched to a regular agenda item, that, currently, we say the public can't speak at that time, but does it make any difference that it moves from consent to regular, that all of a sudden, they should have the right to speak?
Well, they could always speak on, I mean, it becomes a listed agenda item, my agenda's now stuck down here at the bottom, it's gonna have a different number, so, a member of the public could always stay and speak, it, it wouldn't be proper protocol for them to speak right at that moment, but when we take it up as item G, in this case, if needed, return to consent items designated for discussion, I think a speaker could certainly speak at that point.
We never let them.
We, we have.
We do that.
From the consent calendar?
We, what we haven't allowed them to do is if we pulled something then and there to speak, but, and what, what I've noticed is that most people leave before we get to item G.
But we've had people who want to speak on a consent item.
They've wanted to speak on it during D.
No, but, no, we've had them want to speak at the time we talk about it, and we say, no, the only time you can do it, and if you, I think if you read under public comments, the only thing they have the right to speak on, comments on conference and action agenda items are taken at the time the item is considered, everything else is under public comment, and that would include item H, because item H is not a conference item, or an agenda item, or a action item, and I know that we've told people they can't speak on items that we pull and talk about later, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm forgetting something, but I know, I can recall that.
Well, I guess one of the things that would come up... Well, I guess one of the things that would come up is that you wouldn't necessarily know that an item was going to be pulled. And so the person, if you had a concern, you would have already spoken during C3, during public comment. And what we wouldn't do is necessarily allow somebody to speak twice. Dr. Noel?
Yes, my recollection is the same as Mr. Herron's, and it's right here, you know, at the front page of the agenda and the interpretation of it. It says that there is a separate opportunity at the opening of the meeting for public comments, and public comments is a technical term, on the consent agenda, for public comments on the consent agenda. And I remember, the issue was, you only get three minutes for public comments, and you want to talk about something on the consent agenda. Now, it has to come under public comments, and our rule is, public comments are for things that are not on the agenda. And I think that the, our attorney is sitting over there, but my recollection of the Brown Act is that members of the public have a right to speak on any item on the agenda, although it doesn't say, I think the phrasing is, during or before that item is covered. So I don't see how we can preclude the opportunity for members of the public to speak on each and every item of the consent agenda, at least before or during its consideration.
Mrs. Cordero?
I think that that's a topic that we may want to come back to. The language here, I don't think we're objecting to. That says, we take it off, if we pull it, it comes off the consent agenda, and it becomes a regular agenda item. I don't think we're objecting to that language. So I think if we want to have the discussion about how we're going to handle that in terms of public comment, that may be a separate conversation to have.
Well, that's actually moving on to Board Bylaw 9323.
Yes.
So let's talk about Board Bylaw 9323. And as part of that, Mr. Price, maybe you'll address Dr. Noel's comments, because this is where we talk about the public comment time. And actually, I'm just taking a look through, trying to see if it...
Item five on page 35. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board on each item. No.
Well, all...
Oh, go ahead, go right ahead.
And, so I guess my question to you, Mr. Price, is, all it says is before or during. And obviously, we can have it be so that it's, speaking on the consent agenda is, can happen during public comment time, because it's before the item is taken up. But should that language be reflected in 9323? Or is it enough to simply have that on the agenda in terms of the time that that particular section is called?
I think that there's an ambiguity that's created by having the agenda language the way it is and to have the board policy the way it is. And I think that, you know, so my first point would be that the board has the right to make reasonable rules relating to public comment. And, for example, if you have 35 consent items on the agenda, and somebody turns in a speaker slip for 25 of those and wants to go 75 minutes in addition to the remainder of the agenda, there's no law that says that you have to do that. You can regulate it reasonably. And of course, your board is, has, you know, seen things along those lines in the past, which is why the agenda language is the way it is right now. It's really up to your board to decide how you want to handle comments on consent items, as well as on other preliminary items. And when you give direction on how you want to see that implemented and handled at your meeting, then we can write the words. So I think, in other words, that the wordsmithing needs to follow your telling us how you want matters to be handled.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, I think we're in total agreement on almost all of that. My only point was one thing. Once we take an item off the consent calendar and therefore move it into an action item separately, does the public have a right to talk on the action item as a separate item?
Regardless of whether there was a comment on that item earlier at the foot of the agenda. Well, I suppose that if a member of the public at the outset of the agenda said, "I want to comment on consent item one," and spent three minutes talking about it, and then a board member said, "Well, let's save it until the end," if the question is, do they get to comment again? I would say they don't have absolute legal right to do so. It would be up to the determination of the board president and/or a majority of the board.
And my question would be, you know, what if a member of the public says to me, "I want you to pull consent item 21," or whatever, B1, E1, D1, whatever. And so I pull it, and I say, "Okay, I'll do that." So I pull it. When we get to that item at the end of the meeting, does that member of the public then have three minutes to talk about it? If that's what we give, if we give three minutes?
Yeah, I think, I think the common sense answer is, of course, they should. That was the whole purpose.
That's fine.
Although normally, I mean, we would be the ones making the decision that whether we're going to pull something from the consent agenda that doesn't happen, based on public request.
Sometimes it does.
Well, not in a meeting.
Okay.
Dr. Noel?
I just wanted, I'm a little confused by something that Mr. Price said. If, there's a right to talk about every item on the agenda within these reasonable rules. So someone can come up and, at the beginning, and I don't know when they would do it, but they'd say, "I would like to address consent item 10." That's different than being told, "You must do that during your three minutes of public comments." Do I understand that correctly?
I don't understand the question.
Well, the complaint we had was that public comments were being used, people were being required to use part of their three minutes of public comments to address items that they wanted to address on the consent agenda.
Let me see if I can answer your question this way, because I think the prefatory part that you gave may not be correct, where you said that somebody has a right to address every item. They have that right under your policy now. But the nature of that right under the Brown Act is a little bit more ambiguous than that. And what I mean specifically is that it is entirely legal, if you want it, which I know that none of you do, but I'm giving you the example, to have a public comment period at the outset of your agenda. And in addition to the non-agenda items, you say, "Okay, we're going to take public comments on all of our agenda items right now, and speakers will not have more than X minutes." And in fact, there are a number of boards and bodies that do that. Typically, the smaller boards. It's not a common practice in a board that has the volume of business you do. But that's not the point. The point is, it's legal. There is no right, under the state law, for people to be able to get up and speak on each separate item as they come up. They have the right to speak on it, if not during the item, then before, meaning theoretically or alternatively at the beginning of the meeting. So when it comes to the consent agenda, and there are any number of items on there, the board has broad discretion to decide how much time it wants to give over to taking public comments and how much time it wants to allot to any one individual, and has the ability certainly to adjust its rulemaking, depending upon whether the discretion or the broad liberality that's given to the public begins to get abused at any one time. So these rules tend to wax and wane in order to allow the board to conduct its business in an efficient manner, always within the law, obviously.
I guess, I guess what has hung me up a little bit is that we have treated public comments as qualitatively different, and they're things that are not on the agenda at all. It was, is that, are we doing that by our choice, or is that required to have, to make that distinction?
There is no requirement that there be a separate place for non-agendized comments that would be discreet and would not allow other things to be lumped together. Obviously, the former is required to allow non-agenda public comments.
And I want to chime in here, that we are, what we have in here is that when a speaker wishes to comment on multiple items, his or her time may be limited, so as to not interfere with the timely completion of the board's business. And that's happening within the public comment, but you've also been seeing it happen across the agenda. So I don't feel like we're treating the consent agenda differently than we are if somebody's making multiple requests on the conference and the action agenda. We are treating it all the same. It's, so I don't see a conflict with that. Mr. Herron?
I'd like to see it moved to F3.
To F3.
We passed the time allocated for this topic.
We, you wanted to reserve 20 minutes of time for...
We have F3 as a sunshine proposal, and then F4 is special education.
Okay. I would really like to spend a couple more minutes trying to get, make a little bit more progress on this, and then move on. Can I just throw out real quick that what I would like to see come into point number five is part of what we have on the agenda item, just to make it clear, under public comments. And that is, the sentence starting from, "Speakers may not give time to other speakers," because I don't see that anywhere in our board bylaw. And then, "Written comments may also be submitted. Comments on conference and action agenda items are taken during the consideration of the item. There is a separate opportunity at the opening of the meeting for public comments on the consent agenda, other listed agenda topics, and on other matters not on the agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board." And stopping there, then including that in point number five, just so that everything matches up, because that's been working well. And then, just really briefly, we may, we may, go ahead, Mrs. Cordero, if there's something of that. I wanted to move ahead to number seven.
I'm going back to the first page, so if you want to move ahead to seven, that's okay, or you want me to...
Let's do the first page first.
I just wanted to look at the paragraph under quorum and abstentions, the paragraph on abstentions. Because I, I'm not sure we've actually practiced this. "The board believes that when no conflict of interest requires abstention, its members have a duty to vote on issues before them." And I think sometimes we have abstained for issues that are not a conflict of interest.
I think that's true, Mrs. Cordero, but it's also been clear that the, that that vote has counted with the majority of the board, whichever way that's been going. Mr. Price?
The language in the existing policy provides that if a board member abstains, other than because they're recusing themselves, their vote counts with the majority. And that manifested itself in a contract-related matter a couple of months ago. The policy that you formerly had has been, was changed some time ago by the CSBA. I don't think that the CSBA handbook itself recognized the governing California case law, the Dry Creek case, as I recall. But without getting into that, because you want to move on, the point is that it's entirely up to your board. You can have an abstaining vote, either be counted toward the majority or not. And it's, either way, it's a reasonable rule or regulation. So again, it's your policy to decide on.
My question was about whether we have to identify a conflict of interest in order to abstain.
No, you, I'm sorry, once again, I got carried away here. I thought, well, anyway, I wanted to tell you that.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
No, there is no requirement that a reason be given for abstaining, unless you feel that you have a conflict of interest or may have a conflict of interest, in which case you should recuse yourself by not deliberating and leaving the die.
Mrs. Deacon?
Can I just ask clarification about the second part? Because I do remember that specific example. The language here says, "When a member abstains, his or her abstention shall not be counted for purposes of determining whether a majority." Is that different from what you're saying, is that after the vote's been taken, it's a majority? But this, here it says, it's not counted, is that...
The language in your existing policy does not contain the word "not." So...
The language that says "not."
Right. This flips it. In other words, it brings about the opposite result, and you need to be aware of that.
Got it, got it, okay. Right, so we need to think about that. And then we also need to be thinking about number seven, which is about the board president's authority to stop disturbances or willful interruptions. And there is new proposed language that you received today on the dais, on item number seven. Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I like this new language. I did have a question in the, it's the first line at the top of the second page. I'll read the sentence. It begins, "Any person or group who disrupts or impedes the orderly and efficient conduct of any board meeting, or who interferes with the rights of other speakers." I just wanted to clarify, "other speakers" means everyone in the room or other members of the public?
Because there are many ways to disrupt that aren't covered in the earlier part of the phrase, it's intended to have a broad brush. And I think it would relate to not any members of the public doing anything, but rather other members of the public from being able to meaningfully participate in the board meeting, meaning to be able to hear, to be able to see, because of sign waving and that kind of thing, or members of the public who happen to be giving public comments at the time.
Because I noticed the ordinance on which the case law came from also called out staff members, or something along those lines. It didn't just say speakers. So I was just curious. I mean, if a staff member was talking and someone impeded their ability to speak, would that follow, would that be included here?
Well, that's a very astute comment. I didn't think about that. I was paring the Norwalk ordinance down a little bit, and I should have given more consideration to the staff members.
Those disruptive staff members. I just wanted to jump back really quickly to what you were saying about when a member abstains, his or her abstention shall not be counted for purposes of determining, determining whether a majority of the membership of the board has taken action. And while that flips the wording, ultimately is not the effect exactly the same in the sense that if a board member abstains, his or her vote only counts with a majority. So if it were two, there are four of us present, and it's 2-1 on a vote, and one member abstains, then, under the existing bylaw, that would be a 3-1 vote. I mean, it, it's still a 2-1 vote, one abstains, but it doesn't, it doesn't make it a tie vote, let's put it that way. Well, I guess...
I'm sorry, you go ahead, Mrs. Cordero.
I was just gonna say, I was thinking of it as, let's say, there's a 2-2 vote, and one person abstains.
So the fifth person abstains.
The fifth person abstains. It says, there, it would not be used to determine that there's a majority of the membership.
But that's also true under the current policy, because there would not be a majority, so an abstention wouldn't affect a 2-2 vote.
I believe your example is exactly, exactly the one that we've seen, where we have four members, two vote for, one votes against, there's an abstention, and the question is whether it carries or whether it doesn't, and it does carry.
And it carries under, well, obviously, depending on what the quorum required for that particular thing that you're voting on, but...
It, under the existing policy, the abstention would move over to my side, so the two positive votes would be joined, so you would have... votes would be joined, so you would have a majority of the quorum, as required, three votes. Under the proposed language, the vote of the abstaining member would not move into the I camp. Therefore, there would only be two votes and there would not be the required...
Quorum for certain, for certain items where you have to have more, where you have to have like four fifths of the board voting?
No, you'd need three votes for anything.
Oh, well, then that's, okay. So anytime there's...
Right, it's not a majority of the quorum under the education code like it is most other organizations. It's a majority of the board.
Okay.
And that is usually the only time that, you know, these types of situations have come up in my experience.
Well, I personally would think that we really need to keep the old language so that we can take action on items.
Well, yeah, okay.
Mr. Herron?
You said it always takes three, but if there's only three of us here, two passes the motion.
No, well, it doesn't legally.
I'm, I'm sure that in some places, three is a number of people, number of board members present. It doesn't always say majority of...
I, you know, I haven't gone back and looked that up recently, but I believe I've checked your board policies previously to make sure that they're consistent with the education code that specifically states and requires that there needs to be a majority of the board as opposed to the quorum. And it's very clear that a simple majority of the quorum doesn't work.
So we, even if we have a quorum present, we could actually never take action on something if there's only...
If you have a quorum present, a minimum, excuse me, if you have a minimal quorum of three members present, it takes a unanimous vote in order for an action to be taken.
I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
I'd like that one researched for sure, because I, because I know that, I mean, we had a meeting just recently with three members here, and I don't know that every single motion was unanimous. Matter of fact, I don't know, but none of us expected that we had to be unanimous. I, you know, I don't think we sat here thinking we've all got to vote yes in order to do any business. So maybe that was just wrong on our part, thinking, but I'd like you to look at that for sure. It doesn't, because in some places it says majority of the board, and other places it says a more, vote of the members present. So I'm looking at one right here where it says two-thirds vote of the board members present at the meeting, I mean, on page 39.
Well, then the CSBA is wrong if they wrote it that way, because I'm sure of what I'm talking about, but I will give you a, a short memo and I'll quote to the, to the ed code section. And if I'm wrong, I'll bring a hat in that has a hole in the top.
Thank you. All right.
Can you bring chocolate chip cookies instead?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, Mrs. Cordero, let's finish up.
I just had a question on the very end where, I'm sorry, of the, of the addendum that we got on the dais. When the room is ordered clear due to a disturbance, further board proceedings shall concern only matters appearing on the agenda. And I was unclear what that means since as a board, we can only address the items that are on the agenda under normal circumstances, so...
That is existing language. I think that's CSBA language, Mr. Price, but I don't know if that is just self-evident.
Well, I don't either, because I didn't hear the question. I was looking at something that was on point, that was just handed me, so forgive me.
We're looking at the, at the sort of addendum to F2 that we got regarding...
Yes.
The board president's...
Very last sentence.
...authority, and we're looking at the last sentence where it says, "When the room is ordered clear due to a disturbance, further board proceedings shall concern only matters appearing on the agenda." But aren't we always confined to only matters appearing on the agenda?
Yes, that's redundant.
Okay.
All right, so let's remove that last sentence.
And Mr. Hetyank already pointed that out to me, so...
All right, we will be coming back to those in the future. Item F3, Santa Barbara School District Initial Sunshine Proposal to Negotiate with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association for the 2010-2011 school year.
This is our initial proposal. We will be bringing it back to you for action at our next meeting.
Thank you.
How's that for a lengthy presentation?
All right. At this point, we are on to item F4. Of course, my agenda has completely disappeared in all my papers here.
Item F4 is a report to the board.
Update on the status of special education. Thank you.
You got it.
We have no paperwork on it now. F4?
And Tom Gohardo, our Executive Director of Special Education, will deliver this report with the assistance of Carol Miller.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Sarvis, Social Superintendent Swawski, and are you CBO or Assistant Soup? What are you? Deputy Superintendent, my apologies, Mr. Smith. I really want to acknowledge a couple of, of activities that have taken place recently. First of all, we have begun updating our, our website. It's been about five years since the special ed department website's been updated, so we're making it student-centered and user-friendly, and I really appreciate Barbara's work on that as well as Linda Steele. It's, it's, so we started the process. We're not finished, want to make it more user-friendly and have some more information on there, like frequently asked questions, and we've got people's names and positions, extensions and so forth, so that people know who to contact. Secondly, we had in the last, well, since last week, a lot of meetings with, with staff, a lot of meetings with, with parents, and, you know, trying to get the, the communication going and establish some relationships with people. Really appreciate the board's action this evening, our special ed director coming on board. I met with the two other program specialists that, that have come on board, and they're exceptional people, all of them, really have their heart in the right place and very credible in, in the district. And we really need that, because they're going to be in classrooms, they're going to be supporting student achievement, they're going to be supporting staff. And I really, really appreciate your support on that and look forward to continuing to work with them. Last night, did I, uh-huh, yes.
I think it'd be useful to mention their names.
Sure. We have, well, Carrie Mills, Dr. Carrie Mills was approved tonight as special ed director as we know. And then program specialist Kirsten Escobedo's been on board for a while, doing a monumental job, and really appreciates the, the support and assistance. Met this afternoon with Leana Aranida, as well as Debbie Keys-Thomas. And what we're going to do, because they have responsibilities at the school site, so we don't want to leave those classes unattended, so we want to make sure that we can backfill those positions before we bring them over here completely.
Thank you.
And the last piece, and I won't go into too much detail, because I think Carol Miller really deserves a lot of applause and for her work so far this year and also with the FICMAT stakeholder group. We had a lot of people last night. I had the opportunity to get around to different committees, and there was a lot of good interaction and a good, honest conversation. So I really appreciate the work that Carol did. Stephen Harris was in to assist us, Lynn Rodriguez. And gosh, board members, thank you for, for attending, and staff members, both certificated classified parents, community members, and Carol can go into more detail on that. Thank you.
Well, this last week has been very, very busy. I personally met with several parents to reserve, to resolve some concerns and together we came up with some resolutions. And I was able to participate in a tri-county regional center meeting. And Tom and I presented instructional, instructional aid guidelines to our principals and talked about that. And also I attended and facilitated two IEP meetings. And then yesterday, we did have our first stakeholders work group meeting, and there was a nice article in News-Hawk this morning. And then our first task was to review the categories and recommendations and consolidate the duplicates and prioritize recommendations. And we broke up into five subgroups, and as News-Hawk said, we tackled different categories of the many recommendations. And then our subgroups reassembled back to the larger group, and it was repeatedly reported that there were a lot of duplications, and some of the categories could even be more consolidated. And it was agreed that we needed another meeting to spend some time in discussing the categories, and we had each subgroup report, but we didn't get an opportunity to decide on which recommendations we could consolidate as well as prioritize the, the recommendations. So we will be meeting on October 12th from 3:30 until 7:30, and this will allow for more discussion and determining as a group what the priorities are and the consolidations. And then we will hold the public forums after that, probably the end of October. And I was able to consolidate all of the information according to each of the subgroups from the flip charts. And we still need to go back, because there's some missing pieces, and we'll send those out to the team leaders, and so we can get information, so I can get that out to the group. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Madam President, I simply want to commend Carol and, and Tom for a job well done. I thought that the program went very well and made some sense out of an awful lot of stuff. Very, very, very good participation...
Excellent.
...by, by parents and other stakeholders, some very sharp people, very much engaged with the problem. I congratulate you on your organizational effort.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cordero?
Thank you very much. I was attending another meeting, so I wasn't able to be there, and I was just wondering, how do you feel about the turnout from the Spanish language community, Spanish-speaking community?
I thought it was excellent, but I did get a lot of calls from parents today, actually this morning, and I met with a couple of parents, and we're going to get a lot more turnout at the October 12th meeting.
Great.
Especially from the, the Spanish community.
And was, and was this meeting conducted bilaterally?
It was not conducted bilaterally. We did have a translator.
Will the October 12th meeting be conducted bilaterally?
We can talk about that, yes.
Mr. Gohardo? You do need a microphone, so, you want to grab one?
He's usually pretty loud, Tom.
If I could, there were two gentlemen there representing an organization, I believe, Esperanza. And I asked them, you know, do you need the, the interpreter? And they were fine with, with not doing that. But I certainly welcomed them and asked them if, you know, if we could do some more outreach. And then tomorrow evening, Ms. Deacon and I are going to go meet with Pueblo...
Mrs. Cordero.
Oh, it's Ms. Cordero, I'm sorry. We'll go meet with Pueblo tomorrow and do some additional outreach with Hispanic community.
Thank you. Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I would actually like to just make a few comments, too, about last night, and because I knew it was going to be late, I actually wrote some things down, because I didn't want to forget them. But I just wanted to let the board know and the public know that I thought the meeting was really productive, and I was really impressed by all the people there and how hard they worked. They tackled these 153 items with, with really a lot of knowledge and a lot of concern about long-range solutions. Of course, we identified practically every FICMAT recommendation as a top priority, but we also heard that some things are already happening, that some things are already being done. I know there were some people there who wanted to step back a bit and talk about the big picture, but I think the majority of the participants really felt the urgency of putting steps in place right now. And I, and I do think that the crafting of the vision and the mission statements is a logical place to look at these philosophical and systems issues. I think that's where systematic change can really begin to be forged. One of our parents, he's not here right now, but Mr. Hansi said, "You can't hit, hit a target if you don't know where you're going," and he's right in it, and that's where these, the vision and the mission statement come in. There was also concern that the new system we build should be a robust one, it should be flexible, and it should be able to anticipate and address future issues. And, and there was a desire for the board to acknowledge that, and I agree with that. And I think that we do need to talk about that. Previously, the board was really told, "Speed up, get going on this." Last night, we heard people who were telling us, "Slow down." But for those people who would say we're moving too fast, I would respectfully disagree. I would say it's time to, to really knuckle down and address these, these things. There's an awful lot to do, but I sensed last night, there was a really com, a coming together for the common good and for the kids in our district. And so I was actually really heartened by the, you know, the, the meeting, and I know we've got a lot more to do, but I thought it was really productive. And I want to thank Carol Miller and Tom for all the work that they did, as well as the rest of the staff who participated.
Thank you very much.
I think we have a public comment.
Do you have a public comment on this?
Marsha Eckleburger?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and ladies and gentlemen of the board administrators. Two quick points I'd like to make this evening, starting with the mission and the vision. I, I do want to remind the board that our special ed department still doesn't have a board-approved, educationally sound, clearly articulated philosophy of special ed, which underlies the decisions that are made every single day for our kids. And because of this, although steady progress is being made, and I bow down honestly to Carol, you have done a fantastic jog. And Tom, you're, you're here not as long as Carol, but I mean, honest to God, I, the woman is a saint. We're very lucky to have her. So because of this, steady progress is being made, but decisions are still somewhat being made in a vacuum, because we're not weighing it against the larger vision or the focus or the direction. So we need to know what that foundation is, and we need to then ask every time, how does this forward our mission? I mean, we just have to be doing that. And I, here's my meatloaf, Robin. You can't make a meatloaf, even if you have all the ingredients, without a recipe. And if you don't have a recipe, how do you know it's any good? So we need the recipe. So that's my first point. Second point I wanted to make is that I think we're all in agreement that the FICMAT stakeholder group isn't just about implementing organizational change, but that it should more importantly be creating high-quality special education programs in Santa Barbara. I also think we all realize the report by itself isn't sufficient to address the quality programming. However, we can use it, the implementation of the report, to build the better quality programming. So at this moment in time, we all have a fantastic opportunity to vastly improve our special ed programming here in the district, as well as our organizational structure. We have a chance to create model programs and to be a district others look to as a leader in special education in the state. I mean, go team, go! Let's do it! As a member of the stakeholder group, I look forward to having a meaningful community dialogue about special ed programming that's based on best practices with the goal of closing the educational gap for all our kids. So those were the two points I wanted to make tonight. I wasn't going to speak, but here I am. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Thank you so much, and I really look forward to hearing more on, at our next meeting, October 13th, when we get to hear about October 12th. Great, thank you. We are now moving back to our consent items designated for discussion. We had two items that were polled, D4 and D5. Dr. Noel?
We get back, we, we get some money from ROP, is that correct? There's a net, there's a net income. Mike, I have a simple question. What happens to it?
It offsets certificated teacher salary, and actually, there's a schedule in here that shows the percentages that are paid. That was, yeah, right there, the memo, from the director of ROP to Chris Robertson. So what it's showing you is the percentage of those salaries are being paid by ROP, so we will bill them for those.
I got that. Okay. So we don't have to pay that percentage?
That's correct.
So that's a debt savings source?
That's correct.
My question is, what happens to our savings?
It goes into the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. I move to adopt, to approve that item. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
D5, approval of purchase order report for the period September 16th, 2009 through September 22nd, 2009.
A couple of questions, this is mine again. What are entry fees, robotics, paid for out of Perkins' money? Uh, just a couple of questions. This was mine again. Uh, what are entry fees, robotics, paid for out of Perkins money?
Oh, I think I know the answer to that.
Mrs. Deacon?
That's, the robotics team, um, goes to a competition, and I think that money is their entry fee.
That's the, ah, that's the entry, okay. And, uh, consultant services, special ed, uh, I, I'd like to, $29,446. What is that?
Is that Carol Miller?
I, to, to the Santa Barbara County Education Office, I looked into the detail, and it didn't, it just said the same thing.
I don't have an answer tonight. Um, if you could ask questions like this in advance, we could come prepared with answers. But I can get you this information in the board brief this week, if you'd like.
Yeah, I would like to know more about that, but I'm sure, I'd like to know before I vote, actually.
Um, is there a motion on item D5?
Move to approve? Second?
Under comment, you know, you mentioned putting a board brief. I, I think if you find that it's appropriate to put in the board brief, but if it, if it's, if it's not something that necessarily needs to be one, save the paper.
Well, I think
Just let us know.
Um, yes, I mean, I suppose we could, uh,
We could just get an email.
And then, but, uh, it would be nice if it were publicly available, which is a function of the board brief. Just to explain what ADA reimbursement of non-public schools is. Yes, Dr. Noel?
Perhaps, uh, perhaps these descriptions could be more than just five letters in a box. And because not, not only I should know what it is, uh, members of the public who picked this up ought to be able to know what it is.
Mr. Herron?
Does Tom or Carol know what we're paying SBCO $29,000 for consulting services? For a special ed?
No, I think they do.
They do now.
Um, Mr. Cordero or Mrs. Miller, Dr. Miller, do you have any idea what we're referring to? No, you need to look up that information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If that's ADA reimbursement, then it's
And it's also consultant services.
Student attendance at someplace, whether it's extended year, or I don't know.
Well, that's why, I, you know, I would understand it if it said reimbursement, uh, uh, you know, and I, but in, in general, uh, you know, kind of in response to your comment, Dr. Sarvis, uh,
Yes.
I should've asked before, but I'm not the only person who views this. I mean, you know, this is really, should be transparent to the public what this means as well.
Well, I'd like to give you enough information, uh, so that it is obvious that it's a legitimate cost. I mean, I think that's really the base of the question. Is this a legitimate cost, or what is this, anyway?
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, and as a guiding principle, it would be helpful to just have more information, so, um, then that would necessitate no one having to call and ask.
Do we have, is this urgent? To pay, is this
Purchase orders?
I don't know. I do not know.
Maybe we could bring it back.
We have a motion on the floor, so, um, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, take a vote on that. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed?
No.
Uh, it carries 4-1. Mrs. Cordero?
I really, I really have to say, I, I want more information.
Yes.
Please.
Yes, Mrs. Cordero has the floor.
Without having to ask, it, it's, it's public, and it, the information should be here.
I thought I was clear in saying that you would have.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just wanted to add to that, 'cause I almost pulled D3, um, because, but I, I didn't. But it doesn't even, it doesn't give us the amount.
No.
Um, so if we could, when we're looking at, um, adding additional information, that would be one to remember.
Amount in terms of how much it costs?
Yeah.
That, because
I understand Sorry, I understand that it's being paid for by the yearbook, by, at the yearbook, but it would still be interesting to, I mean, I'd still want to know how much, what the cost is.
Yes, I, I actually instructed my secretary to get that at a previous one, and she forgot here, and I noticed it after it was already in here. So that is the practice I'm trying to get in place.
All right, uh, we're on to coming events. Item H, which we went over at the beginning of the meeting. Um, and we also heard about a new stakeholders' meeting, special ed stakeholders' meeting on October 12th. Uh, item I, board comments and correspondence. Mr. Herron?
Did you need the newspaper article?
Got one, I got one, oh, that, that food one, yeah.
That was awesome.
I want to go to the cafeteria and eat. I mean, that is gourmet, you know? And, and talking about recipes, uh, I went to the Junior Chef at Adams, and they had a huge recipe, and they, they talked about what a recipe is. And I saw these youngsters, uh, chopping three different types of peppers, and with knives. I said, oh, God, what's going on here? They each had a knife in their hand. I couldn't believe it. But they were good, they were like a saw. It was good. So, and that was, it was interesting at Adams, that they, they, uh, made the, the meal yesterday, and they ate it today, I think, so, uh, Robitelli or Roga?
It was Ratatouille.
Ratatouille, Ratatouille. I wouldn't go back and eat it, but that's okay.
The kids loved it.
They loved it, okay.
And, and I have to say, a lot of them were, were sort of amazed at themselves, uh, and very proud of themselves, especially that they had tried something that had eggplant in it, and that they really liked it.
The fact that they cook it themselves, or make it themselves, mean that they probably will eat it. That was a, a main point that I heard there. It was great. Uh, today's the band article about Santa Barbara Junior, uh, Santa Barbara High School Jazz Band. Uh, I did a, a little more research. I talked about the United Way, but I think it should be pointed out that seven of our schools had 390 volunteers, uh, working a week ago Saturday. And I, I would hope that the district would then send a thank-you note to United Way for that day of caring and providing 390, 390 volunteers. Maybe you already have, but, um, seven of our schools, 200 at Dos Pueblos, 70, uh, cleaning up a beach, 65 at Franklin. So our schools really benefited from that day, and it'd be nice, and maybe, well, I won't go there. But, uh, we should really be involved in that in the future. They're doing such a great job for the schools. Maybe we should have some kind of program to get our employees to also be involved, since they're helping our schools so much.
And we do, and they are.
They are, good. And then CSBA had a, um, a webcast of the top 10 issues facing education. And it was very good. The, the actual webcast is now on the website, or you can get a printed version of the 10 topics. Uh, it's well worth your effort to take a look at that. It was, it was a very good webcast.
Other board members? Mrs. Deacon?
I, I have one footnote. Um, Friday UCSB's Marine Science Institute celebrated its 40th anniversary. And I want you to know that all of the programs that they do with our schools were widely in evidence and well-publicized, and there was a great turnout there. And one of the high points for me was talking to a PhD student. When I asked her what she wanted to do when she finished her doctorate, she said she was thinking of going into science education. And she's already working with some of our avid students, so it wa, it was, it was really positive.
And I just wanted to follow up on the Junior Chef Day. Um, uh, I got to put on the white coat for a while. It was very hot. Um, but the, this is a program that Orfola School Food School Garden is doing for, um, 16 elementary schools across the county, and a number of the schools within our own elementary district. And they were just starting, um, it, uh, yesterday was day one of doing the whole series. So the professional chef that they had called in to, to, uh, conduct the classroom, essentially, an all-day program. She was doing one day at the first school, then starting day one at the next school, then starting day one at the next school. And kids are trying, I assume it's Ratatouille all the way through. Um, because one of the focuses was that they were only using, um, vegetables that had been grown within 15 miles of our city. Um, and so that's probably going to, uh, direct what recipe is used. Um, but it was really impressive what they're doing for schools and the children throughout the county. I was very, very impressed. So, any other comments? With that, we will move on to future agenda items. And we had some comments earlier about the single plan presentations. I don't know if board members want to make some comments about how they'd like that to look. Dr. Noel?
I'll just repeat what I, what I said before. I would, and you smiled and said that we'll be pleased with what you're doing.
Yeah. Well, what we'd like to do is to, uh, present this in the same way that we presented it last year, with the, uh, quite notable exception, we listened last year, of an executive summary right up front, so that you get in very short form the AYP results, the API results, and then you get right into the activities. What are the major categories, Robin?
The first thing is the instructional focus. After the demographics and the data, there's the instructional focus. So pulling right from the plan, just kind of bulleted, just boom, 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 the instructional focus. And then the professional development that supports that, and then pyramid of interventions, or, uh, the ways that the intervention structure is at each school. They're very similar. We're making sure that these executive summaries look very much alike for every one of the schools.
So we formatted this based on your comments last year, and we'd like to do the same thing this year. Uh, after we bring you the stack, after we do the presentation, and have the principals here in the audience, so that if you have any questions to ask of them, then we'll ask you again. So are there changes, or are there other ways you'd like to go about this in the, in the future?
The budget, the, the budget summaries ought to come first.
First?
Kind of, well, it's sort of like, the, it's an executive summary of the whole thing. It says, you know, here's, here are the problems, here are the goals, uh, and, you know, here's how much we're gonna spend, here's what we're gonna, gonna spend it on. Then, then the, the rest of the 30 pages we can look at within, after having seen the broad view.
Do, do you, are you referring to that, there's a page in the plan that we could pull up into the executive summary, and it just says, like, federal funding, Title I, this amount, Title III, this amount. Is that what you're looking for?
A little more, a little more detail than that, but yeah.
Well, you're talking about, about revenue, and I believe you want to know what activities and what amounts for each of those activities.
We're approving a, a plan to spend money.
The, and the way the plan is put together, I, you, you're familiar with it, is that it goes through the different goals, and then in the goals, of course, are those expenditures. And you're right, there's no place necessarily in the way the plans
Long and tedious and does not give one in summary view.
Dr. Noel, long and tedious. I can't believe you think that about the single plans.
So you're asking for the amount, but you could say, this is how much Title I money we receive, and these are the expenditures listed out under it? Is that the kind of thing you'd like, like on a, and part of the, that would be included in the executive summary?
Well, what, once you matrix the, the revenue, and each of the activities, and the amount for each of the activities, now you've got something big.
Yeah.
Uh, may I suggest just a bullet listing of the activities, activity amount, activity amount, activity amount? Because that's what's spread over major pages with a lot of description in the plan itself.
Yeah. I mean, the, what we have now is like a state form, basically, isn't it?
It's the online plan form, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and it's, it's not user-friendly.
But I, I, I want to be careful, because you've, you've come, uh, you're talking about a new executive summary that may answer, just in a narrative format, some of the questions that Dr. Noel's raising about, you know, making it easy to see the, the, the budget. This is what we spend the money on, without necessarily giving the exact amounts?
But it is what we spend the money on, but there are not exact amounts in there, and I, and
I just want to be careful, because I know that so many of the principals have done all this work. I don't want them to have to do any more changes at this point, when there might be more things that we, we want to change in the future. So it's something to think about, Mrs. Cordero.
And I just want to say that I don't want us to lose that narrative executive summary. That was the thing that I think a lot of us said last year. We really wanted to have sort of more, um, systematic, um, consistent across the, the schools. And I want to make sure that that is what we're getting, um, because, uh, that's, was very useful in the ones that we did see.
We actually talk about the school rather than fill in the blanks.
All right. Any other future agenda items? I guess my one question on the single plans, is that meant to come at a regular meeting, or are we gonna have a special meeting for them?
I, regular meeting. I think it's October 27th.
Okay, Dr. Noel?
Uh, this is from memory, uh, but in one of those policies, it talked about getting things on the agenda. And it, you, in the same paragraph, it said, "Board members and members of the public." To get something on the agenda, had to do it in writing, and it would be in the third meeting thereafter. And I said, how does that fit with what we are doing at this moment, when we have future agenda items orally?
Um, yeah, that's a good point. But I, I think it's, it's fair to say that, you know, obviously, Dr. Sarvis is taking notes, but if you, if you are really adamant that you want something down, you should email, because the reality is
I know he takes notes. He has a better memory than I do about what I've asked him on the agenda. But, uh, but I didn't, I, but does that mean that what, if we ask for it here, we don't have to write a, a written proposal and wait three weeks, or three, and have the deadline of the, the maximum time of the third session? There's an ambiguity there.
Yeah.
Well, uh, you know, almost every meeting is, is packed out by the time we start to look at the agenda, and we already have too many items by the previous Tuesday to be able to handle at that meeting. And I suppose we'll always reserve the right to move items ahead to the next meeting, or, or even the, the following meeting.
But we might want to just clarify the board bylaw, uh, on that, and say, you know, a written request or during the future agenda items.
Board member.
Or cross that board member.
And the board process has been going on rather informally, uh, for a long time.
All right. With no objection from the board at this time?
Future agenda items.
Oh, you have another one?
Based on your email responses, we targeted November 19th as the joint city council meeting and board meeting for the City of Galita, and we're anticipating that it will either be at Dos Pueblos or Galita Valley. Uh, 3:30, I think, was the earliest possible. Is that right, Ms. Cordero? That's a Thursday. Thursday at 3:30? Okay. That, it was your response that we pegged that on. Good. Uh, now
Well, I think I said after 3:30.
Oh, is 4 o'clock? Well, we're talking about being at Dos Pueblos, possibly. Okay, I'll let her know 4 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you. November 19th.
All right. Uh, with no objection from the board at this time, this meeting is adjourned.